I would like to call the October 9th, 2012, Martin City Council Meeting for Order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with a roll call?
Yes. Mayor Coombs?
President.
Councilmembers Bagley?
Here.
Finley?
Here.
Levison?
Here.
Samori?
President.
Santos?
Here.
Whit?
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a form.
Thank you. Let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic towards its ends, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have the opportunity to speak during public hearing items this evening or the final call public invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. We now have the minutes to approve from the September 18th. Are there any corrections or additions made? Does someone have a motion? Councilmember Whit?
I'd like to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Bowery, are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
Yes, Mayor Coombs. Resolution 2012-87 is being added to your agenda as consent item R-9R, and that was emailed to council on the 5th. I'll read the title when we get to that consent agenda. And then, there were two revised ordinances that were also emailed to you on October 5th. They are for 2012-64 and Ordinance 2012-65, which are part of the budget item, so it'd be 9A and 9-983 and 984. And those will, ordinances, replace the version that was delivered with your packet. And that's it.
Okay.
Is there any report from the city manager? Mayor Council, no report.
All right.
We have a proclamation designating October 11th, 2012, as Day of the Girl in Longmont. Our commission designating October 11th, 2012, as the Day of the Girl in Longmont, whereas equality and universal access to education for every girl and boy are among the United Nations Millennium Development Goals, supported by 189 countries, including the United States. And whereas the United Nations establishes October 11th as the annual international Day of the Girl, supported and co-sponsored by the United States and 97 other countries. And whereas the Day of the Girl campaign calls on communities across the globe to recognize the girls worldwide face many injustices such as discrimination, gender stereotypes, and lack of education, and empowers girls to fight for their rights. And whereas the city of Longmont joins the Blossom Project to support increasing girls' participation in sports, science, math-related activities, improve the high school graduation rates for girls, provide equal opportunities for all girls by speaking out against gender-based injustices, celebrate all girls' potential, and encourage all girls to pursue their dreams. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Al Combs, mayor by the virtue of authority vested in me and the city council of Longmont, do hereby proclaim October 11th, 2012, as the Day of the Girl in Longmont. And I invite all citizens in the community to be aware of the special and vital services provided by the Blossom Project.
Thank you very much. My name is Marissa Chevins. I'm a part of the Blossom Project. We work on educating high school girls about issues that women and girls face here and around the world, and then they pick advocacy projects that they think will help address these issues. And Day of the Girl was something that we thought was really important, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Marissa.
Second.
Guys, let's give her a hand.
Okay, the first person on the list, public invited to be heard, is Kathy Weber Harding. Please come down and state your name and address for the record, please.
Mayor Coombs and city council members, I'm Kathy Weber Harding, President/CEO of the Longmont area chamber, and my location is 528 Main Street. In September, I received a letter from Craig Cheney, Chair of the Chamber, and regarding the unanimous support of the Chamber Board for Newmark Merrill and Allen Ginsberg for their their plans on the redevelopment of the Twin Peaks Mall. Tonight, you'll be discussing ordinance 2012-69 regarding the Twin Peaks Mall and approval of the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the Merrill area and the urban renewal project. The Chamber, our board, our members, are asking you to support that ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Longmont Youth Council.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, and the members of the Longmont City Youth Council, or Council, sorry. My name is Hope Ho, and I'm from Nilewood High School.
I'm Ling, and I'm also from Nilewood High School.
I'm Megan Pritchard, and I'm also from Nilewood High School.
And we're representing the Longmont City Youth Council. Okay, so the Longmont Youth Council would like to challenge you, the leaders of Longmont, in the sixth annual Halloween for the Hungry competition.
So we, Longmont Youth Council, are again challenging city council in a competition to see who can raise the most non-perishable food items. The results from 2011 were 450 total cans, and youth council raised 293, and city council had 160.
This challenge will take place from October 15th to November 2nd. This gives you guys 19 days for collection and the opportunity for redemption, as you can see from our trophy. We have won every single year except for 2010.
That's right.
Yeah. So hopefully this year you guys will maybe step it up a little bit. This year, our food drive will extend and coincide with a partner from another food drive that will be occurring, the Food Day Boulder County. All food collected will be donated to our Center Food Bank. The goal is to reach 50,000 pounds of healthy food donations. Please see the list in front of you for suggested items.
So as you remember, we have based Halloween for the Hungry on the idea of trick-or-treating for cans instead of candy, so we hope this will like assist our community.
And Longmont Youth Council will continue providing support by picking up donated items throughout the challenge and storing them. The collected items will be given to the applicants.
We will set out bins at the civic center as well as the youth center, so feel free to drop them off at any time. Halloween for the Hungry is a very fun challenge. This year's winner will have their name added to the trophy, which is displayed in the civic center mall.
So our goal is to raise as much as, as much non-perishable food items for the community, and with your support and assistance, we have the opportunity to reach this goal.
If you have any questions, you can contact Christina Pacheco with Children and Youth Services at 3774-3752.
On behalf of the Longmont City Youth Council, thank you for your time and good luck.
We got a quick question, Councilmember Santos.
Before we start wishing good luck, so are we doing cans or pounds this year?
We're doing cans, but we will measure in pounds later on, so depending on how big your cans are.
And how many members of the youth council are there?
I don't know. We haven't had an accurate head count, but we have elections tomorrow, so we will let you know.
Great, because you know, as members of council, I would be more than willing to direct staff to help us out with this. So maybe that'll come at the end of the meeting. And good luck to you guys.
To you, may the best council win.
Councilmember Levison?
Yes, I would suggest that we get a box that we can, you know, solicit donations during council meetings, too, so that if someone wants to come and bring a can to council, before you talk at public invited to be heard, you can deposit one in our box.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Heads up, they've stacked the deck. So as a liaison to the Longmont City Youth Council, they're devious, their cards are covered. I don't know if it's official, but I would like to move to accept their challenge.
All right, all in favor? Hi.
Good evening. My name is Greg Ludlow. I live at 1909 Sundance Drive. I'm a third-generation citizen of Longmont. My grandfather's over there on the wall, a mayor, he was a mayor in 1929. Would have been another fun year to be on the city council of Longmont. I have some firsthand experience I want to share with you all in hopes to bring awareness to something I see as unintended consequence of the possibility of a fracking ban. About a year ago, I began negotiating with Top Oil about the mineral rights we have on our farm at the northwest corner of 119 and Cunningham Line Road. By May of this year, we'd reached verbal understanding about offside horizontal drilling, about the signing bonus, about the royalty interests. I engaged my attorney to hammer through a mineral lease about the same time the possibility of this fracking ban on the November valet came up, and understandably, Top stopped negotiating on the lease with me. Here's the unintended consequence that I see, and I want to ensure that you and the public are well aware of, if the fracking ban passes. I will not be offered a lease because Top will not drill without the ability to frac. So the city of Longmont will effectively have taken our minerals without paying for them. Monetarily, we'll be out the signing bonus, any future royalties. I don't think that's right. I cannot imagine you think it's right, and I don't think other landowners are going to be in agreement with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Strata Dunston, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. Good evening, mayor, council. I realize there's at least two sides to every issue, and my concern is for the health and safety of the citizens of Longmont and the retention of home rule. I am equally disgusted and sad that our recent mayor, my friend Roger Lang, would allow his name to be used in an atrociously false campaign by big oil money against the citizens of Longmont and our right to home rule. We should vote for the city charter amendment. Tragically, our governor is also acting now as a shield for the oil tycoons. The one-party state of corporate impunity seeks to create cynicism, while both parties often lie about what they will do for you. One party, you know them, lies on almost every issue. Governor Romney will never release his tax forms because he didn't pay any taxes for about 10 years, billionaire's privilege. Nor will he ever give a clear statement on anything that he is supposedly for or against, because if he says one thing, maybe three hours later he'll say the opposite. The campaigner for Vice President, Representative Ryan, not only lies about his budget, outsourcing, taxes, the war on women, the auto industry, et cetera, he also lies about his marathon time. Now, I've run a couple of 301 marathons even 20 or 30 years ago. I don't lie about my time. I never broke three hours. I was close. I was very close, numerous times, but I didn't run a 415 in College Sub Three. I didn't lie an hour and a quarter about my time. There are questions of integrity that come up, and personal humanity, and the ability to at least sometimes tell the truth. Let's keep all this in mind, and we got to protect our land and our water because the future is in jeopardy. Thank you.
Catherine Walker?
And ma'am, and also the amazing council, I'm so happy to be here tonight. I live on 500 last way, Unit 42. I just wanted to let you guys know that I believe that this city someday should definitely have a rail fare for all the rail fans of Colorado to come to this beautiful city to watch the phenomenal freight trains of BNSF, Union Pacific, and Southern Pacific, and Canadian Pacific go through this town. I also want to definitely say that I totally agree with that, ma'am, that we should never drill oil in a city of Longmont because definitely it would cause a big disturbance to all the beautiful wildlife that we have here in Longmont, Colorado. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Mayor Coombs, your first item on second reading is ordinance 2012-61, a bill for an ordinance amending section 4.72, 0.05, 045 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Economic Development Incentives, and Brad Power, this year.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. Brad Power, I'm the Director of the Economic Development Department, and we're here this evening to discuss the amendments to the development fee-related portion of our primary employer incentives ordinance. The primary jobs incentives program has been a keystone element of the city's economic development program for over 20 years, and the proposed ordinance before you this evening is intended to streamline the process through which we work with employers who qualify for the program. The changes are primarily based on the lessons that we've learned over the past 18 months, having completed three incentive package programs with primary employers who chose to expand in Longmont. One of the things that we're not doing is changing the two most fundamental elements of the ordinance. The first is, in order to qualify for these incentive packages, an employer must create a minimum of 10 jobs over the course of, it's worked out to approximately two years in terms of fulfilling that commitment. They also need to pay a minimum of 5% above the Boulder County average wage rate, and we're proposing to keep those two fundamental aspects of the ordinance in place. The other thing that we're doing is we're creating additional administrative approval requirements and possibilities that we can approve at a staff level, and the percentages in the existing ordinance have been replaced by a dollar amount limit going forward, is the proposal. This is due in part because of all the companies that we've been working with over the course of the last couple of years have all requested and received 100% of the eligible fees that they were qualified for. So to be specific, incentive amounts under $75,000 would be able to be approved administratively, again, if they meet that criteria. Anything over $75,000 in amount, and we're talking about our development-related fees and taxes, would continue to require council review and approval. The ordinances have been reviewed, and we've worked with pretty closely the staff of the LAAC, and I think you may be hearing from John Cody in a few minutes in the public hearing about that. And then based on a request on the first reading a few weeks ago, we will start to add a line in our monthly departmental report about any fees that have been rebated administratively. We'll also probably start implementing an annual report about our entire incentive program as well, and we'll provide that to the council and the community. The ordinance is intended to address the 2012 city council work plan item that's related to investigating the overall operation effectiveness of the primary job incentive program, and this ordinance is also intended to address another one of the council's goals, which is the ongoing reduction of red tape in the city's business services. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions either now or following your public
Any questions from councilors? Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, mayor. In reviewing the packet, the only concern I have is what's the maximum? I'm not talking about the 75,000. I mean, if you give the 75,000 a thousand times, I mean, it would be, I could picture a scenario where it kind of gets out of control. So if it's not coming back to council and it's all done administratively, what's the stopgap? At what point do you no longer have control over the purse strings?
Councilmember Bagley, the intention is, these are one-time awards for a company, so it's not a continual dip at the trough.
I'm talking about, what if there's a thousand companies? I mean, the whole point isn't necessarily, the whole point is that council should be the one controlling the city budget. So my concern would be having the staff giving out too many of these, meaning 75,000 times a thousand. I mean, one or two, not a big deal, but I didn't see in the ordinance where the, what's the total pool amount?
Councilmember Bagley, I think that is a very good point. I think in reality, the number of companies that will create the minimum number of jobs at the salary level will inherently limit the number of companies that will be eligible for the awards. They also have to go through our process, they want to engage. A lot of the companies are just going out and finding space. It's the ones that have special requirements that they need to either increase the safety, fire sprinklers, that type of thing in these buildings, that they come to us for these types of incentive programs. So the 10-job minimum and the salary amount minimum, which right now is about mid-50s, so far, in this environment at least, has limited the number of companies that will come in. In terms of the upper end of the dollar limit, in theory, over that $75,000, it's really pegged to the capital investments that they're making, either in new buildings or expanded buildings. That's really what drives the numbers and the amount of these incentives. It's based on how much capital investment they're making in the physical space that they're going to be occupying.
Every year, one, how many, how many of these below $75,000 do we give out? We've done three awards in the last 18 months, and there were two that were above $75,000, and there was one that was below $75,000. And then last question, what is the mechanism? I mean, I don't necessarily want to say we should put on a limit, because if we say 10, then we're going to get 10. And so I don't necessarily think that's the result, but is there a mechanism to come back if we do hit a certain number?
Do you see what I, I see what I'm saying. I certainly think if we have a deluge of companies that are asking for these incentives, which has not been the case to date, but if that were to change, I think if we are awarding a significant number of those, I think that at that point in time, we would come back and take a look at the administrative regulations to maybe have the requirements frankly increased if we're meeting those thresholds easily, more easily in the future than we have been so far. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Witt?
I just want to congratulate Councilmember Bagley for his extreme optimism. I am excited about this, but I think that it will be self-limiting, but if we should have a problem with so many companies coming to Longmont that we just can't keep up, I'm sure we'll revisit it, yeah?
Councilmember Witt, I think that is exactly the case. I think if it proves to be that type of popularity, we would actually come back to you and say that we would need to raise the minimum threshold levels.
All right.
Wouldn't that be a good problem to have?
It'd be awesome.
I think that'd be an excellent problem to have, mayor. Councilmember Samori?
That's exactly what I was going to say. I'd love to see a thousand companies ask for that incentive, because if they are creating that many jobs, it would be great for the community and for the local economy.
Councilmember Finley?
And wouldn't it also be true that if a company were coming in and asking for that kind of rebate, they'd be paying much more in fees in total, probably?
Councilmember Finley, that's correct. These are for certain development-related fees, so there are certain of the fees that are eligible and certain of the other fees that would be normally paid through the normal course of permitting.
All right, I will open up the public hearing. Looks like John Cody's on the list here. Mayor Coombs, members of city council, we should all be so lucky. If we have, if we have a thousand companies, you know, I'm going to be up here advocating to give them all money, because there's going to be so much sales tax, you guys are going to have to figure out what you're going to do with it. The truth of the matter is incentives from everyone who's in this business, incentives usually act as a tiebreaker, or perhaps icing on the cake, an indication from the community that they care enough about this company that they're willing to ease the cost burden for expanding in the community. So I would like to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance. Brad and I and his staff have worked closely over the last few years. Brad goes with me on a number of visits to companies, so there's a good chance he's going to have some insight to some of these companies. going to have some insight to, uh, some of these companies, uh, even before they might ever ask for incentives. But the truth is, is creating quality jobs in this community is what supports the rest of the economy. You all know that. But companies are interested in timeliness, and they're interested in consistency. This addresses both of those issues in my estimation. Um, timeliness, um, Brad and his staff will be deeply involved, as well as the attorney's office when it comes to drafting the agreement. They'll be the people most knowledgeable about how this project, or any given project, is going to work. Also, companies coming to you here would have an idea of what they're looking at. Not that coming to council would necessarily cause any problem, but they are now on the front end. If it's below this level, it's an administrative review, otherwise you come to council. So, in all respects, I'm in favor of this. I think it, uh, makes the process easier and more straightforward, and I hope you support it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Please come forward.
Greetings, Mayor and council. Strider Benston, nine fifty-one seventeenth. Um, I, uh, probably what I have to ask, you already know, but I did not hear it in Brad's statement, uh, I'm always concerned about the, uh, individual circumstance, and, uh, I wonder, you, uh, you mentioned the minimum of ten jobs at five percent, uh, standard Boulder County jobs rate. Is that per standard job classification pay rate, or is that an overall average? Because, uh, Mr. Cody, I think, mentioned in the mid-fifties, that's kind of an overall average. So, I don't know how that would play out, and the other thing is, would that refer to each job or the average of the whole, however many new hires there are? Could there be an answer on that?
We're still in public hearing. Yeah. This is, this, is that?
We're still in public hearing.
Yeah.
I'll wait till you're finished.
Okay. So, we can answer after we close public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Now, I'll close public hearing. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move ordinance two thousand twelve, desk sixty-one. And Brad, if you have one answer?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, uh, the, the ten jobs is, um, and the wages, is an average wage for each, each position, so each position needs to average that wage. Um, and I forget the other part of Strider's question, was, did that answer it? I think it, did?
Okay. So, is the average of, of the positions need to be at that level?
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just to clarify, I am for this. My only, I was just voicing concern that at some point, it like, the reason I was, seventy-five thousand is one, a thousand would be seventy-five million, and I just pointed out that it's council's venue and stewardship to make sure that money gets spent. I don't have a concern with seventy-five thousand in the hands of unelected officials. I have a concern if it's seventy-five million. So I was just voicing my concern of, it's a great idea, but if you come back, Mr. Cody, and we have a thousand people that want seventy-five grand, we should probably have a discussion.
Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, I, I think that my earlier concern was precisely what Councilmember Bagley brought up. However, um, you know, my suggestion was to, if we gave out six hundred thousand to have at least a, a report at that marker, but, uh, that's been addressed with you, um, including information, um, and having an annual report. So, um, maybe the first, you know, after the first, uh, uh, couple of ones, you know, if you can highlight it for us so we don't miss it in the report.
Councilmember Santos? Thank you, Mayor. I, I believe what Brad said is, and, and you guys do monthly reports to us anyway, you're going to add it to the monthly report.
You will.
So I did hear that correctly, so there covers Councilmember Levinson's deal. So, I think we're all on the same page, I hope.
Mm-hmm.
Um, everyone's concern is laid waste, hopefully laid waste, but, you know, if we have a thousand companies coming into town, again, John, I'd be jumping for joy. So, uh, and Brad, even if it's, you know, a hundred, we should probably know about it, so, and I, and I'm sure John will be here saying, hey, we got a hundred. So, thanks for everything.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Shall we go? Yeah, pass it seven to zero. Thank you, Brad.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is presentation of funding recommendations for the two thousand thirteen Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Program, and Affordable Housing Funding, and a public hearing for citizen input regarding the proposed funding. Kathy Fedler will make a presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Kathy Fedler, CDBG Coordinator for the City of Longmont. Um, and as Valerie indicated, we are here tonight to present the Longmont Housing and Human Services Advisory Board's recommendations on how to allocate two thousand thirteen funding, um, from the city's Affordable Housing Funds, its, uh, Community Development Block Grant Program, and its Home Program. Um, if you recall, when we set budgets, um, around what categories of things to fund, um, we are basing our, um, recommendations on a twenty percent cut to the two thousand twelve funding levels for the CDBG and Home Programs, um, and we also provided some recommendations if we receive more funding than, than that, uh, low amount. I think that is the, the bottom amount that it would be, um, and we made, um, recommendations for up to one hundred percent of the two thousand twelve funding. Um, and also, in addition, the Housing and Human Services Advisory Board is recommending that only the Affordable Housing Funds anticipated program income estimated to be received in two thousand thirteen be, uh, used to fund, um, recommended projects going forward, so not touching the, um, principal funding that is in the Affordable Housing Fund. Um, looking first at the CDBG program, um, all of the CDBG housing-related funds are going to support the ongoing homeowner and home purchase programs. None of the funds were, uh, used for, uh, competitive housing projects. We saved those for the home funding and the Affordable Housing Fund. So we are recommending, or the advisory board is recommending, um, that the ongoing general rehab program, um, architecture barrier removal program, emergency grant program, and the homeownership training purchase, post-purchase counseling program, um, operated by Boulder County Housing Counseling Program, um, be funded with CDBG funds, as shown on attachment one, uh, to your communication. Um, in the area of economic development, um, we, the advisory board is recommending between sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-five, one ninety-three, depending on what we receive, um, from, from the CDBG program. Uh, go for economic development activities, specifically the small business lending program, um, in two thousand thirteen, and I did place at your, um, desk an update to the Economic Development Fund, because we did close, um, six new loans, uh, just this past, well, we actually reimbursed Colorado Enterprise Fund for six new loans, um, just this past week. So, that was quite a significant amount of activity. Um, so we are now looking at, um, having, uh, closed twelve loans in ten businesses, to ten businesses to date, totaling one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars loaned. Um, eight low and moderate income owners were assisted to date, so they fell under the micro enterprise category. Um, and there are an additional six loans in progress at this time, which would, um, total about a hundred and six thousand if those loans go forward. Um, in the neighborhood revitalization category, we're also looking at the same amount of funding being set aside in two thousand thirteen, which is the sixty-eight thousand to the eighty-five, um, one ninety-three, again, depending on what we get from, uh, the CDBG program. Um, we are, um, making significant progress, um, in the formation of two new neighborhoods, Old North Longmont and Kitlee, and are starting to work in two new areas, the Lanyon, um, Park area and Spangler, um, area. We've completed, uh, park improvements at Alta Park in Old North Longmont and Athletic Field Park, um, in Kitlee Neighborhood. Um, and the Athletic Field Park improvements were just completed, so there's new little, um, totlot kinds of, uh, activities for the kids in that area now. Uh, multiple cleanup efforts and some significant lighting improvements, um, have been made in the Lanyon Park area as well, just in the past couple of weeks. Um, that area is a focus for the Crime Free Multi-Housing Program, and several rental properties in, in that area have participated. Um, community reinvestment is another category of funding from CDBG that council set aside competitive funds for. Fifty-eight thousand in total is being recommended, um, to support the Digital Divide Program, um, which brings computers and internet access to low-income families with school-age children. Sixteen thousand for the match savings program for low-income families, so they can either purchase a home, uh, start a business, or, um, continue their education. Eighteen thousand for access- accessibility improvements to the Center for People with Disability's Office at six fifteen Main. Then sixteen thousand for rent and security deposits, um, to move homeless individuals into housing. So these are folks that are working, they just can't afford, um, the rent and security deposits. They can afford the ongoing rent, but because they're, um, renting in, uh, weekly rentals or, um, even daily rentals, they can't get enough money ahead to get that security deposit, but they can make rent once they would have that assistance. Um, and then we're setting aside, um, the full twenty percent administration from CDBG funds, um, as well. If there's any questions about that, otherwise I'll go into the Home Funds and the Affordable Housing Funds that are being recommended.
Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, thank you. Um, Kathy, when I was looking at the, um, the aspect that involved the six fifteen, um, Main Street, um, which the, uh, the details were on, um, page forty-five of the packet, my question was, um, is, I guess the, uh, LDDA could not, some of their funds couldn't be accessed to help with some of those improvements, because isn't that within the LDDA area? But they're not, I, I don't believe they're doing parking lot improvements up in that area, but would it qualify for some LDDA improvement money?
So, um, Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levinson, I don't know specifically that they've applied for the building itself for any kind of improvement funds, but I know they, um, just are doing, um, actually, they did a pavement, uh, six, the Village Place parking lot and the six, not the parking lot, but the Sixth, um, Avenue area right in front of Village Place, which is joint project between the LHA and the DDA. So that has just been repaved, because it was in bad shape. There was no striping left, et cetera, so they've striped that, um, as part of that joint, um, venture. Um, I do not know that they applied for or would be eligible for DDA funds. I can find that out.
I, I think, well, and what I, I note on page forty-five was that it says it's a, um, automatic door openers, concrete accessibility ramp, um, with guardrails on the west entrance. Um, I, I almost believe maybe the door openers might qualify for like the facade improvement programs or something else. I'm just wondering if there might be a possibility of leveraging, um, some of the CDBG money further, so that if we do have other needs that we need to, um, uh, if, if we're so successful right now with some of those loan programs, to have an extra little bit, um, because we spent less than thirty thousand, five hundred and fifty in this area, might be to, um, future advantage. That, that's my only comment.
Councilmember Bagley? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, I seem to recall on the Housing and Human Services Advisory Board, there was some discussion. They don't get riled up very much in that advisory board, but there was some discussion, and, uh, some of the advisory board members felt that the building was actually owned by the Longmont Housing Authority, and that it would be more appropriate that they, as the owner, provide those monies for the improvements rather than the city. How did that discussion shake out?
So, Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, um, there was a discussion about that. I think where it shook out was, you know, the housing authority is the owner of the building, but they are providing, um, the, um, space to center for people with disabilities at a very reduced rate, to support another nonprofit, so they aren't accumulating enough, um, reserves at this point in time to be able to fully fund this project. Um, the advisory board did not fully fund what the request was, so that they are asking the housing authority to put in some equity into it, just not the full amount, so it's kind of a, a share.
What was the full amount? What was the split, the share split? Sorry for not calling your ear today, but I know you've got the answer.
The full request was thirty thousand, five hundred and fifty, and the recommended funding is eighteen thousand.
Okay.
A little bit less than, a little bit more than half.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions, so I'll open this up to public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Kathy, um, did you have more?
I, I can share with you the recommendations for the Home Funds and the Affordable Housing Funds.
I thought.
Okay. Um, so, the Home and the Affordable Housing Funds, uh, as you know, can only be used to support housing projects. Um, so, what was being recommended, and we did open up, um, some funds for competitive funding from those two funding sources. Um, the in-between is being recommended to receive additional funding for the rehab of their new building at two thirty Kaufman, somewhere between a hundred and forty-six, six hundred to one hundred and eighty-three, again, depending on how much we get in Home Funds. Um, twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty is being recommended to support the Longmont Christian Housing, Saint Green Manor, tub shower conversion, which is an ongoing, um, project. Um, and then, um, affordable housing funds are being recommended to support the Aspen Meadows Senior Apartment elevator, um, improvements. They had some significant problems with the, um, hydraulics in their only elevator in that building, um, so this would, uh, be a deferred loan that would help them, um, make those improvements. Uh, deferred loan is also being recommended for, um, to the Longmont Housing Authority for the Suites Building to do some roof repairs. Um, and then finally, twenty thousand is being recommended, again, in a deferred loan, um, to, uh, Thistle Community Housing to replace the windows at their two Terry Street Apartments. Um, and again, um, from the Home Funds, the full, uh, ten percent administration that we're allowed is being, um, um, held out and recommended, and then there is also funding set aside, um, for administration from the Affordable Housing Fund. Administration funds are used to support three FTE employees and benefits, um, data, our database management and upkeep, and, um, to, uh, transfers for indirect costs that were charged, as well as conducting the homeless point-in-time survey each year, and all of our copying, supplying, uh, materials, et cetera. So, any questions, I would be happy to try and answer them.
Councilmember Bagley? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My only concern is, um, Thistle's requesting what? I wasn't on council when the Thistle debacle happened, but my concern is, I, I don't understand it, but the name itself raises concern. So what exactly are we giving them money for? Is it the same group that was irresponsible with them, the, the monies before? And is it appropriate to continue giving them money?
So, um, Mayor Coombs and council, um, my response to that, I guess, is, um, that, yes, it's Thistle Community Housing. One of their projects, Blue Vista, which is a homeownership, um, project, has, um, gone into foreclosure. Um, this is a rental, one of their rental properties, which they have four in Longmont, four different rental properties. Um, the financials for this pro- particular project was thoroughly reviewed by the Technical Review Group, which is part of, um, why they were formed, was for their expertise in, in looking at embedding the projects. Um, Thistle does put every one of their projects into separate LLCs, um, to control, um, each property, so there's kind of a firewall, if you will, um, between, uh, that project and, um, their other projects to help protect against, um, one spilling, problems in one spilling into the other. Um, and then finally, the, um, both advisory boards are recommending that this be a loan tied to the refinance, sale, or transfer, um, of the property at Terry Street, um, so we would get paid back, but I did check, and we will be in fifth position behind a mortgage of a hundred and thou- hundred thousand dollars and three other city loans of two, totaling two hundred and fifty thousand. two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So a total of three-hundred-and-fifty thousand in debt before this particular twenty-thousand-dollar loan. And the assessed value, the assessed value, not the appraised value, but the assessed value of that property is over eight-hundred thousand dollars. So there is fairly sufficient equity for a twenty-thousand-dollar loan. But again, it is ultimately your decision whether or not you want to accept the recommendation on this particular one or on any part of what's being recommended here.
Turn your light off.
Councilmember Bagley. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess one of my concerns in sitting, I mean, I just kind of sat in, fly on the wall, but a talking fly. My concern was the Technical Review Group had members that had worked with Thistle Communities before that recused themselves because they were involved in the process. And so I can understand why you'd remove yourself in the process, but at the same time, I mean, they didn't say anything because they recused themselves, but I would have liked to have known if they had concerns. And so that's one thought I'm having. And then the other thought is, what's the difference between this and anybody in town who has rentals for low-income families? Why would we give them money and not Cat and Roger Young, who have multiple low-income housing projects that they rent?
So Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, folks are not prevented from coming in and requesting funds. We do for-profit, if you will, entities are eligible. We have not had any applications. We do a, add in the paper as well as on our website, et cetera, soliciting applications and it specifically says that for-profit, that as long as they are providing rental or housing to low-income folks, then we can show that and they're willing to have their, some restriction on their property if it's a loan that's made. So that is not precluded. We have never had anyone that I can remember, a for-profit, come in and request funding.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Kathy, I have a question regarding the loan and how it's structured. Do we do deeds of trust?
Yes.
Do we do ninety-nine-year loan structure?
No. Ours are generally, generally for rental projects. It depends on what the project, the dollar amount is and what the project terms, the project can bear. So we kind of adjust interest rate and terms depending on what the project can, has the ability to repay. So we have structured things from five years to twenty years, depending on the amount and et cetera. Interest rates from zero to, I think the highest we've ever charged is four percent interest rate. So really, it's based on what that particular project can afford to repay and won't break the bank, so to speak.
So we have a really good track record working with nonprofits when they need this type of loan to structure it so they can actually afford it?
So far, we've only had one that's gone.
That's, yeah, and I know about that one, but I'm just, just using this as comparison because this might come up in a different topic in another, I think, next week. Thank you.
Councilmember Levison.
So Kathy, from the project that we're talking about lending this money for, I mean, it seems that it would cut down on some, if they're replacing windows and making it safer, it would maybe save money in energy costs so that they would, I mean, it looks like they would be able to pay it back just based on some savings plus reduce the liability. And frankly, I mean, Thistle has, it seems like, enough protections and firewalls that, you know, another project leading into determining whether or not there's a loan given for this amount doesn't seem incredibly relevant to me. However, do they have any target for how much money they'll potentially save with doing the improvements as far as energy? Because it is for windows, right?
Correct. And I believe at this particular property, the tenant pays utilities, so it's really the savings is to the tenant, who are low-income, so anything that can be saved to help them out is a benefit also.
So by doing this, possibly, you know, we would be hurting the tenant, not actually hurting Thistle itself?
That would be probably more true, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Samori.
Well, I would beg to differ that it doesn't have any relevance on it. I mean, if any of us default on a loan and we try to get a loan from a bank, they would generally not on the left, you know, they would refuse us a loan. And it wasn't just a minor loan that they defaulted on, it was a healthy sum that they defaulted on. I don't want to penalize the tenants, but if we already are, have given them loans up to three-hundred thousand dollars, have they made any payments against those loans yet?
Councilmember Samori, I'm trying to remember if they are, yes, one has been, oh, wait, here, I've got it, sorry. So one, the very first one they got was a deferred loan payment started in 2013, so they'll start paying that back in 2013. One was a forgivable loan, which expires in 2015, so that one started in, so that one was a ten-year forgivable, so one-tenth was forgiven each year. They stayed in the property and used it as affordable housing. One was a fifty-thousand-dollar loan that was paid off. Actually, I just received the final payment, so that loan is totally paid off. So it hasn't been released yet. So one of those loans that I reported to you will be coming off.
And how many of the loans that we've given them are forgivable?
Just one.
On other properties as well, or just this one?
On other ones, or just the Terry Street one, they just got the one on other properties. There may be one on English Village. I'd have to check on that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I can't put my finger on it, but I'm actually against giving money to Thistle. I think that our advisory board, I said they hit it out of the park. I mean, they did awesome work, but a million bucks, you know, and I, it sounds like they paid off a fifty-thousand-dollar loan, but this was just, what, two years ago, year and a half ago? And it just seems foolish as a lender to, I mean, you pointed out that they've got good safeguards in place so our money would be protected, even in fifth position, but those safeguards are what allowed them to basically file bankruptcy and we lost a million bucks. So I'd actually move that we actually take this particular money and not give it to Thistle this year.
Second.
Okay. Second person, second.
Councilmember Levison.
So then you'd rather penalize the tenants who are paying the utilities rather than who are income-challenged people living in the apartments, who might have been there many years, that they have an opportunity to lower their utility bill? And assuming that, you know, in the housing crisis that we had, to single out one non-for-profit who had a bankruptcy, there were thousands of for-profit developers who went out into bankruptcy. I mean, to me, they, you know, to say, we're going to take twenty thousand dollars and basically not enable the people, the tenants who are living in there, to have a safer environment and to lower their utility costs, where we could actually help people. It's not about necessarily helping Thistle with, I mean, here's a loan for twenty thousand dollars, it's going to be repaid, there's only three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars on the, even if we're in fifty, fifth position, their assessed value, eight-hundred thousand. I mean, it's pretty, you know, it seems pretty harsh to me that, you know, we're not really, you know, if you wanted to hurt Thistle, you could hurt them other ways. This hurts the tenants. This doesn't hurt Thistle. And bottom line, I'm not voting for this because, you know what? We have an opportunity to help somebody here. And, you know, are you for making a rent-assisted facility owned by a nonprofit, lower the cost to the tenant by savings and utilities, and make a safer environment? Or are you willing to just, you know, look at it as punishing their master for a past project failure and, that was dependent in one of, that happened in one of the worst meltdowns of the housing nationwide that we've had since the Great Depression? I mean, come on, folks.
Councilmember Bagley. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I admire your passion, Councilmember Levison. But I think, first of all, I wasn't on council. I don't have a dog in this fight. I don't hate Thistle. I don't want to punish them. I don't think we have the data, meaning, we don't know how much the utilities would be lowered. We don't know how much they'd save. We don't know their names, if they're hurting, whether they're not hurting. All I know is that when you owe someone money, you have a fiscal and fiduciary duty in order to pay back to people who are lending you money. And if they're foolish enough to lend it to you again, when you've once defaulted on the loan, I just think that maybe waiting a year or two before doing business with Thistle again would be wise fiscal management. And I'm not sure, I'm not an attorney that practices real estate law or rental law, but it's not like, we're not giving them money, so the landlords are going to say, oh, screw you, we're going to turn to a slumlord now. They have a responsibility to provide for their tenants. We, as a city, do not have a responsibility to provide for their capital improvements. And just because, and a lot of people, I mean, there's a difference between for-profit and nonprofit, but not much. The only difference legally between a for-profit and a nonprofit is the nonprofit can't sell it, but the management earns money, they increase their assets, they increase in wealth. And so all I'm saying is that I don't, we have no data to say that the poor tenants are going to get injured. What I do know is the landlord, A, continues to be responsible for their tenants, B, has screwed the city and got out of payment, and three, I am hesitant to lend them money until sufficient time has passed where we can say, you have taken care of the city's money, and we'll start doing business with you again. So I respect your passion, but I still don't think we should give them money this year and then we should reassess next year.
Well, I don't think that, you know, we should cover our nose to spy our face. I kind of agree with both your arguments in a lot of ways, but, you know, again, they did pay off a fifty-thousand-dollar loan. It was the worst financial, I mean, even, I believe Bank of America walked away from five buildings in San Francisco and defaulted, did Streetix default, even though they're telling their people that they know money to not default. So it was a different situation and, you know, at some point, I think we have to do what is probably best for the, for those tenants. And, you know, it's, I understand the argument on both sides and it's a tough, tough argument, but I'm kind of siding with what Sarah's saying on this. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. Well, you know, I think Councilmembers Levison and Bagley do make very good points on both sides, and that's why I second the motion to have actually the discussion. Because I feel that if an entity has defaulted on a loan from, starting in 2013, they don't get any more money from the city. If there's a way to do that, then that's what I would like to see in going forward. Now, twenty thousand dollars is not a whole heck of a lot of money. You know, it, will it help the residents that live there? Yes. Does it send a message to Thistle if we do not fund them at twenty thousand dollars? Yes. You know, whether, and I haven't decided how I'm going to vote because I second it, again, just to have this discussion, I thought it was important to have. You know, it's twenty thousand dollars coming from our Affordable Housing Fund. What's the fund balance in that currently, after?
The principal balance is around nine-hundred thousand.
Nine-hundred thousand. So in actuality, we'd have almost two million dollars if the nine-hundred thousand dollars didn't have to, it got squared away, squandered away. And, you know, you're going to hear people say, God, from both, either side, middle side, you name it, the political spectrum, the worst economy and worst economy and worst economy. Yes, people walked away from loans, people walked away from their houses, you name it. But in the end, we're all responsible for our actions. So, you know, whether it's twenty thousand dollars this year, now, I have no problem with that, whether it passes or not. But I think next year, definitely, we need to have some sort of policy that if you have defaulted on a loan with the City of Longmont, or have made promises to the City of Longmont and you default, we will look more than twice on whether or not we're going to fund you from this, that day forward.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would tend to agree with the Councilmember Bagley. If this were a business and someone defaulted on a loan, would they even come and ask you for more money? No, because they know that it wouldn't be approved. I think we should operate on that same principle. Do we know if the tenants actually pay their utility bills or are those paid through Thistle?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, the tenants do pay for gas, heat, their heat, I don't think they pay for water or garbage, but the other, all the other utilities.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Okay, just to clarify, that, you know, the twenty thousand or twenty-nine thousand is not what's the issue here, it's integrity of the organization. Because the money that they defaulted on was supposed to help people that couldn't afford homes. They were supposed to build affordable homes with those that people can, could buy and be able to live in, and they didn't. And we're not penalizing the tenants if we don't give them the money, because Thistle should be responsible enough and should have funds to be able to help with that as well. And again, as Councilman Bagley stated, it's not the city's responsibility, it is Thistle's responsibility. Okay? If I have an apartment building, it's my responsibility to maintain the apartment building. And then if I need to increase the rent to make up for whatever cost I sunk into it or not, that would be my issue. I wouldn't need, you know, or I'd go borrow a loan from a bank and pay for it myself. But here, we have an organization that has multiple loans with us, some that we forgive, some that they don't pay back for a long time, and we are actually helping Thistle more than we are helping the tenant, because it increases the value of their asset. So we're not penalizing the tenant. I don't see it that way.
Councilmember Levison.
So Kathy, let me, I'm trying to find where the Thistle part is on our packet, which is hard because I can't just flip a page, so. So the twenty-four units are less or at sixty percent permanent affordable, so what is, so these are windows that are original, built in nineteen seventy-three, and it would seal the front decks, the main entrances, where the steel is, got a chemical reaction between two materials causing the decks to rust. And, I mean, when people talk about raising, I mean, is this likely to raise the assessed value, you know, exceedingly high, I mean, more than the value of the project we're talking about?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison, so what is, what was requested was to replace the windows and to seal the front decks because of the chemical reaction that's happening. What was recommended is that only the window replacement be funded because of the benefit to the tenants. The seal, resealing the concrete on the decks was not recommended for funding, it was felt that is something Thistle should be doing on its own. Replacing the windows probably will increase the value of the property more than the twenty thousand that would be put in, I would imagine. more than the $20,000 that would be put in, I would imagine. That's a fairly significant improvement. It won't, you know, appreciably increase, that would be my guess. And I do want to point out, because this is an affordable apartment complex, they are limited in how much they can raise rents. There is a cap on how far they can go. So they cannot just raise rents in order to fund a project necessarily.
So they're, so just the administrative structure of this is sort of a rock and a hard place?
Right.
And when we're looking at the permanent affordability, what's the, what are the, the income? Are we talking about, you know, average median income? Boulder County being less than 50% of average median income. Where are we looking at in dollars for a family of four?
So this particular project, even though they're allowed to go up to 60% affordability, a rent that's affordable at 60%, the folks that are in there are mostly a lot below 50% of their median income, with a lot of them below 40%. 50% of their median income for a two-person household is probably around 30, 30,000 to 40,000? I think 80%. It's probably less than that. I did not bring those figures, I'm sorry.
So we're not talking about people that if, you know, their lives could actually really be improved a little bit if they frankly were able to cut, you know, $5 or $10 off of their utility bill every month? But that's, you know, to me, that could be the difference for them not having to go to community food share, maybe one week, or not actually asking for other assistance, or, God forbid, they might actually go, be able to go out and buy a present for somebody or shop for Christmas or whatever, and actually put sales tax dollars with the money that they save not paying additional utilities. And so if there's a cap on how much rent that can be charged, but their utility bills continue to go up, then that doesn't, I mean, their percentage of income that they're devoting to housing would get skewed again, wouldn't it?
Correct.
Okay, so they may actually be spending, ultimately, this decision could have them spending more money on housing in an aggregate than maybe what would be a better price point for them. And are these people that are, in general, are they families? Are they older people?
Cherry Street are all two bedrooms, so I think there's a mix. Some are singles up to families. I know there are families in there.
Okay, great. And then, I guess that's, yeah, I think, and, you know, frankly, again, if you're going to save somebody's utility bill, you're going to make, you're going to actually be able to do something to help the tenant. And if you're looking at the property being improved with the addition of newer windows, that puts us in even a better position to be paid back.
Councilmember Samori. Do these qualify for Section 8? Do they get reimbursed from other agencies for the rent difference?
They potentially could. I do not know if they have any vouchers in there. They're not, it is not a place that has project-based vouchers that are attached to the units, but there could potentially be some folks with a voucher in there, but I don't know that for a fact.
So if they have those, they're not really renting below market? Because the tenant may be paying below market?
Yeah, the tenant only pays 30% of their income, but the total rent is capped through the voucher program.
Yeah, but it's not limited to the 30% of the income?
No.
Okay. So they are generating some revenue to cover their overhead?
Yes, they're, I mean, it's, it's, it is generating income. It is not generating enough income to have a sufficient replacement reserve to be able to do a project of this size.
But it's generating enough income to pay for salaries and administration?
That is probably their top priority.
Okay, so some of those salaries and administration could potentially go?
If they haven't already gone through all that exercise to, right.
So it's not that, again, the intent is not to hurt the tenant. I mean, the tenant is paying whatever they're paying currently. So if it doesn't get improved, it's not going to be an increase in payment. It's going to probably stay level, the most likely. And again, the intent is not to hurt the tenant.
Councilmember Bagley. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And I think that the issue here isn't whether or not we give to Thistle or whether or not we're hurting tenants. The issue is that I think that we have a responsibility to set the tone and say that if you don't honor your commitments with the city, you will not get money. And it's not because I'm being a mean. We would have, had they not defaulted, we could do this 50 times. 50 times, minus divided by 20,000, we could be helping 50 times the under-income people, had we been more careful with who we did business with or had they been more fiscally responsible. And yes, it was a hard economy, but there's a lot of people that lived within their means and they were ready for the, for the seven years of famine, so to speak. And I think that Mayor Proterm Santos has a phenomenal idea. I think that we should consider a policy. I mean, if you file bankruptcy, you can't refile for eight years. It used to be seven. I think that if you default on a loan, I don't think we should consider giving people money for eight years. I just think that we should just make that city policy, starting from here on out. And if you don't honor your commitments, don't bother asking us. That way, we don't have to have these conversations anymore, and people are put unnoticed. So I know there's a motion on the table, and I don't think I'm allowed to make a motion, but once we're done talking and brought around Thistle, I think I'm going to make that motion.
Okay, what I'd like to do is open the public hearing one more time because you didn't give a tired presentation before us up and across. Is, are you, are you sure with your presentation, your follow-up presentation?
I think the only thing that I would add is that how much we appreciate the work of the Housing Advisory Board and the Technical Review Group. They spent a lot of time, a lot of evenings, on hearing from the applicants, et cetera. And then the other thing I neglected to mention is that the funds that are being recommended will be leveraging about another 1.5 million in other public and private funding. So there would be a total investment of just under $4 million through the use of these funds. And there's going to be a 30-day public comment period after this that the public can comment on what is being recommended, and then it will come back to you guys again for formal final approval before it goes to head, so.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. So to clarify your motion, it's basically to prove this, but take the $20,000 from Thistle out?
That is indeed the motion, yeah.
Okay. All right, let's, let's vote on this. Okay, that passes 5 to 2 with the councilmember Levison and Samori dissenting. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I also note that the city adopt as an official position that if you default on a loan or financial commitment to the city, you're ineligible for applying for and receiving grant or loan money for eight years.
Councilmember Santos, thank you. I'd rather have that discussion when we go back into the 2014 budget. I think that's probably the best place, you know, we're going to have those discussions right after we finish the 2013 budget, correct? Right, there is an item, though, that council can give us direction that we can bring back. There's probably, you know, I, I think it may have, I think that's probably better direction that be addressed when we take up the 2014 budget. And to see what we can and cannot do with regards to that. Well, we need to see if it needs to come back in the form of an ordinance or, you know, what is that mechanism that we need to create, to bring it back?
But?
Councilmember?
I also want to understand a little bit more. Is this only these funds or is it also in the other organization that we have dealings with? Is it, will it be strictly restricted to the? I think we need to know more so that we can make really good policy. But I admire the sentiment. Let's, let's look into it a little bit more deeply.
Councilmember Bagley. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't think I have the votes tonight, but I think that I, I withdraw my motion. Will second it? Was it? Would you withdraw your second, please, Councilmember Finley? Just, thank you. And I would move that we give staff direction that they bring back, not an ordinance, but we just bring back the topic and let's talk about it. And then, because my idea, Councilmember Whit, is that if you default on any financial commitment you have with the city, you do not get a free handout, for-profit, nonprofit, et cetera, if you default on that commitment for a period of eight years. Whether it's Thistle Communities, the Bagley Law Firm, Alex Samori, the Whit Family, doesn't matter.
The public ask really?
Second.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes 6 to 1. Councilmember Levison dissenting.
Yeah. So on the $12,000 that Thistle is not going to receive now, do you want us to bring back from the Housing Advisory Board recommendations on what to do with that $12,000 for the second, the next public hearing you'll have in 30 or so days?
Councilmember Levison.
I'd like to see whether or not we can incent some more businesses with those business loans.
It's affordable housing funds.
It's affordable housing funds, sorry. Well, you know, it's in the pot. I think maybe just leaving it in the pot to see what, what else in the future, since that fund is diminishing, so.
Could I have a motion about that?
Councilmember Bagley. Thank you, Mayor. I think all of Councilmember Levison's arguments were completely valid. By keeping it in the pot, low-income tenants will get helped or some other type of person in need will get helped. And so we can have a win-win here. So I move that we actually direct staff to keep the money in the pot, so to speak, for further use.
All right, let's, let's vote on that. That passes 7 to 0.
Thank you very much.
Let's take a 10-minute break.
That passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Let's, uh, take a ten-minute break. Okay. Okay, Councilmember Levinson.
Yes, um, well, I, I guess, um, if we're going to go forward, are we gonna start with first reading on the budget ordinances? So, before we, um, have the reading for the budget ordinances, um, I would like to recuse myself from the portion of the budget that approves the funding for Longmont Symphony Orchestra. So, whatever ordinance that falls into, can we, um, pull that off and have every bit of it? I can vote on part of it, and then I can leave the room, and everybody else can vote on that section, or? Can you, can you give us some advice on how I could do that?
Um, Mayor Coons and Councilmember Levinson, so that would be both, um, 9A3 and 4, both of those ordinances. Um, so, I guess my advice would be, well, I'm gonna defer to Ashley Eugene, I think.
I'm sorry, I just wanna be consistent if I recuse myself the first time on that section of, of moving that, um, item forward. I wanna make sure I'm consistent.
Go ahead, Eugene.
So, Mayor and Council, um, maybe it can be a tag-team effort. Conceptually, I think you wanna take out the Longmont Symphony funding piece, vote on the rest of the ordinance with a full council, then Councilmember Levinson could leave the room, and you can vote on just the Longmont Symphony item.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it might be that, go ahead and have Valerie read in all the ordinances in second reading, and then we can pull those off, and then maybe have that separate vote. If that works for everybody.
Okay. Mayor Coons, your consent item. Item 9A is five ordinances. The first one is ordinance 2012-62, fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the city of Longmont for the year 2012 to pay budgeted city expenses for the 2013 fiscal year. Item 9A2 is ordinance 2012-63, fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the Longmont Downtown Development District for the year 2012 to pay budgeted expenses of the Longmont, um, DDA for the 2013 fiscal year. Item 9A3 is ordinance 2012-64, adopting the budget for the city of Longmont for the year 2013, and that would be that revised ordinance that was emailed to you. Item 9A, uh, A, A4 is ordinance 2012-65, making appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2013, and again, that was a revised order that was emailed to you. Uh, 9A5 is ordinance 2012-66, amending Longmont Municipal Code Section 14.50.070 to extend for one year the fee for park and greenway maintenance. Item 9B is ordinance 2012-67, which is a bill for an ordinance amending Title 14, Chapter 14.08 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Sewer Rates. I'm sorry, public hearing scheduled for October 23rd, 2012. Ordinance 9C is ord, is, um, 2012-68, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 14.36 of the Longmont Municipal Code to set interim park impact fees introduction, uh, first public hearing scheduled for October 23rd, 2012. 9D is ordinance 2012-69, a bill for an ordinance making certain legislative findings and approving the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the Twin Peaks Small Urban Renewal Project. Public hearing scheduled for October 23rd, 2012. Ordinance 9E, I'm sorry, item 9E, ordinance 2012-70 and 71 are the top operating mineral leases and lease ratifications. Public hearing is scheduled for October 23rd. The first of those two ordinances, um, is ordinance 2012-70, authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the mineral estates of the real property known as the Lower Adrian, Custer, and Northern Shores properties, known as the premises to top operating company. Ordinance 2012-71 is a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to ratify the leases of the mineral estates of the real property known as the Pechel and Collins properties, the premises to top operating company. 9F is ordinance 2012-72, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Fairgrounds Marketplace Annexation, generally located south of Rogers Road and west of Hoover Street, and zoning the property CR, regional commercial. The public hearing is second reading scheduled for October 23rd. 9G is ordinance 2012-73, which amends Chapters 2.04 and 14.05 of the Longmont Municipal Code to streamline development applications on land already meeting the raw water requirement policy, with public hearing scheduled for October 23rd. 9H is ordinance 2012-74, an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Adrian property to Alan Seawald. The public hearing is scheduled for October 23rd. Item 9I is Resolution 2012-78, the resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the municipal sub-district of the Northern Colorado Water Conservancy District Windy Gap Firming Project Water Activity Enterprise for the Sixth Amendment to the Fourth Interim Agreement for Participation in the Windy Gap Firming Project. Item 9J is Resolution 2012-79, which is a resolution of the Longmont City Council authorizing the Director of Public Works and Natural Resources, or Designee, to enter into agreements, leases, and exchanges concerning reused water rental, surplus water rental, and water rights. 9K is Resolution 2012-80, resolution of the council finding that the petition for annexation of parcels of land located in Boulder County, state of Colorado, known as the Airport Road Annexation, generally located along Airport Road between Seventeenth Avenue and Rogers Road, substantially complies with the Colorado Revised Statute, Section 3112-1071. Item 9L is Resolution 2012-81, um, concerning exclusion of the Collins property within the city of Longmont, Colorado, from the Mountain View Fire Protection and Left-Hand Water Districts. 9M is Resolution 2012-82, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado Department of Public Safety for an Emergency Management Performance Grant. 9N is Resolution 2012-83, approving a grant from the Colorado Department of Transportation for 2012 impaired driving enforcement campaign. 9O is Resolution 2012-84, approving a grant from the Colorado Department of Transportation for the 212012 High Visibility Enforcement Campaign. 9P is Resolution 2012-85, approving a grant from the Colorado Department of Transportation for the 2012 click-it-or-ticket enforcement campaign. Item 9Q is, uh, Resolution 2012-86, approving a grant from the Colorado Department of Public Safety for the 2012 School-Based Restorative Justice Program. And 9, 9R, Resolution 2000, R, 2012-87, um, urging Longmont citizens to vote no on Ballot Amendment 64 concerning the use and regulation of marijuana on the November 6th, 2012 statewide general election ballot. And Mayor, uh, staff would like you to pull item 9B for a short presentation. That I just read.
That passed a great job of reading all those resolutions, by the way. Uh, is there any discussions, or would anybody like to, uh, remove any? Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to remove, um, uh, 9A3, 4, and 5, please. And then I have, uh, uh, did you say you're removing, is it D or B?
B as in boy.
B as in boy, okay.
D, isn't mine?
Councilmember Wood, I'd like to move the consent agenda minus 9A3, 9A4, 9A5, 9B.
Alright, let's vote.
Actually, there was one that, one other one, I think I wanted to remove, and I'm sorry.
Can I borrow your agenda for a second, because I can't kind of scroll?
Can you do that once it's been first?
But I'd like to, to be able to amend that. I just had a, um, a non, did I say 9C? 9C I would like to remove, too. Thank you.
Councilmember Wood?
I would like to move the consent agenda. Do you have one as well, Councilmember? Okay. Okay. I would like to move the consent agenda minus 9A3, 9A4, 9A5, 9B, and 9C.
Alright, let's vote. Okay, that passes, uh, seven to zero.
Councilmember Santos? Thank you, Mayor. Guess we're at 9A3, which is ordinance 2012-64. So, if, if, uh, no one has a objection, I would like to move 2012-64 minus the piece for the Longmont Symphony.
Alright, let's vote on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Yes, Mayor, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Mayor, I'd like to be excused because I'm recusing myself on the Longmont Symphony piece of this vote.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Levinson, for saying "recues" and not "reclues", proper term. I would move the portion of the 2012, uh, ordinance 2012-64, which includes the Longmont Symphony Orchestra.
Alright, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Levinson, uh, absent. One second, I gotta wait to make this work. Councilmember Santos, thank you. And before we, uh, take on ordinance 2012-65, I'd like to move the portion of 2012-65, which includes the Longmont Symphony Orchestra. Alright, let's vote on that. That passes, uh, six to zero with Councilmember Levinson absent.
And the only reason I did that, Mayor, is so that Councilmember Levinson could just stay, stay where she was at, and then not have to go back and, and out, so.
Okay, good. Councilmember Wood?
Uh, I was going to move 9A4, not including this piece that we already passed.
Alright, let's vote. That was confusing. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, Mayor, I'm the one who pulled off, um, 9A5, and that is the ordinance regarding the one-year, uh, it's, the extension for one year of the, um, the park fee. And, um, the reason I pulled it off is that I am not going to be supporting this. I recall very strongly opposing it and reluctantly agreeing to pass it for a sunsetted, uh, amount of time, and, um, I just feel that, um, I wanna honor what I felt was an obligation to try to do my very best to, to end this, and to, uh, make sure that, I mean, we all spoke about making sure we would sunset this thing, and I just, uh, don't want my conscience to bother me to say that I'm extending something where I really, uh, did not have any intention of seeing this past, uh, keeping it past the sunset period. And I understand the implications, I just, um, have to live with myself, so I will be voting no on this.
Councilmember Santos? Thank you, Mayor. I think that just could have been accomplished with a no vote. So, I would move ordinance, uh, ordinance 2012-66.
Alright, let's vote. Okay, that passes, uh, six to one with Councilmember Levinson descending.
I think your next item is 9B, and Barbara Grayne will present that one. Thank you, uh, Mayor Coons and members of council. I'm Barbara McGrayne, Business Services Manager for the Public Works and Natural Resources Department. And, um, I want to, uh, just go over some highlights on the new cost of service sewer rates, um, that are in your packet tonight on first reading. Um, this is the culmination of, of a series of meetings that we started with you in February. We had our pre-session at the end of February on improvements that needed to occur at our wastewater treatment plant. Um, we went into some more detail with you on that at our August 7th council meeting, and we laid out some rate increases, and talked in more depth about those improvements. And then, at the September 18th council meeting, um, we also got, um, approval from council to include the, uh, portion of the project which included cogeneration. And so, what I've placed at your, your dais tonight are two, uh, two things. One is my, uh, PowerPoint presentation for tonight, and then the second is this, this brochure, and I just wanna call your attention to this. This is actually a report from the, um, National Association of Clean Water Agencies. It, it's done triannually, every three years, and it talks about the state of the sewer industry in the nation, and the challenges that, um, folks providing sewer service across the country are facing, and it's very timely for what we've been discussing with you this year. And it's, uh, it's put together very well, um, and, um, a couple of pages that I want to draw your attention to, if you, if you can't spend time reading the whole thing, is page 20 and 21, which talks about, um, single-family rate structures, and where we compare nationally, and, and the challenges for the future, so, um, yeah. For those of you, it's, it's a pretty quick read, and it's, it's, it's a, it's a good, it's a good, um, piece of material. So, moving on, um, the presentation I'm gonna go through tonight briefly is, um, just, uh, go through the summary of improvements that we've been discussing, and then go in, uh, some more depth on some cost of service changes as an outcome of those rate increases, and what those proposed rates are, as well as, as briefly go through a monthly bill comparison by customer class. Um, so, thanks, Sandy. Uh, moving on, um, the, there were basically four areas of improvements that we were proposing, um, about nineteen and a half million for regulatory compliance of, uh, higher level of ammonia removal. Biopsy and odor control for a little over eleven million. Infrastructure renewal projects around seven million, and then about three and a half million for the methane reuse project, for a total of forty-one point four million dollars that we need to, um, move forward with, and our regulatory compliance work needs to be completed by the end of 2016. Um, so, an outcome of all of this, um, work was that we did a financial model with, um, rate increases beginning in 2013 through 2017, and as part of that financial model, we had our Red Oak, our rate consultant, review that plan with staff, as well as BLX Group, which is our financial advisor, um, for when we do bond sales, and, um, they both, uh, both of them vetted our financial plan with staff, as well as, um, Red Oak went back and did a specific cost of service, um, proposal for us. So, um, some basic changes that are gonna happen with the cost of service is, um, we're, we're proposing to move to a consistent volume charge for all our we're, we're proposing to move to a consistent volume charge for all our customer classes. Right now, our restaurants and food, fast food businesses are subject to extra strength waste surcharges. And we are proposing to, um, no longer have that moving forward. Um, surcharges, um, that are charged cover treatment costs associated with three basic, um, strengths constituents. One is BOD, which is the biochemical oxygen demand, which basically is a measurement of the organic waste strength. Uh, the second one is TSS, or total suspended solids, which measures the amount of suspended material in the waste stream. And then the last constituent is total kilogram nitrogen, which measures the amount of nitrogen content in the waste stream. And, um, in the past, our surcharges, in particular for fast food and restaurants, was based upon some previous national studies that were done. Um, there was a study done in the eighties by East Bay Municipal Utility District, as well as in, uh, late, uh, nineteen ninety-nine, right around the turn of the century, that California did. And they, they did waste sampling and, um, measured the strength of those particular types of commercial businesses and recommended surcharges. Um, since then, um, staff did a very detailed, um, waste stream analysis in our own particular sewer system in 2011. And what our, um, what that analysis showed is that there's no significant difference in those waste strengths between residential and fast foods in our commercial customer class and our residential areas, which is the basic base level that surcharges are, are, um, charged above. And based upon that, um, that analysis, we are proposing to collapse and no longer charge surcharges for those two customers, customer classes. Um, another, uh, change is, um, based upon that, uh, that analysis, is changing those base levels. Um, so our BOD level, we propose to change from three hundred milligram, milligrams per liter to three hundred and forty. Uh, so that's going, um, up slightly. Our TSS, we propose to go down, and then our TCAN, we propose to go up slightly. And keeping in mind that these new values are based upon that actual sampling that was done in specific areas in Longmont. Um, and so it, it, um, it really represents what's going on in our, in our collection system. Uh, so then, the thing that will still continue is, is we will still be permitting our, our significant industrial users. Um, this is regulated through the EPA, um, and we have a definition of that in our ordinance. Um, those folks are still subject to surcharges above that basic waste strength level. And, um, one change is, is that we do want to have them, uh, install flow metering. In some instances, we allow them to use the water that has run through their, uh, half of their water meter and not have a specific meter placed in their waste stream. And we want to require that, that meter to be put in on, on the waste stream for the sewer system side. But, um, those folks will still be permitted through that, our pretreatment program, and, um, that's, that's really not much of a change there. And those are our large industrial users. So moving to, um, the changes in cost of service, um, I understand this, this is probably a little busy, but I want to call your attention to a couple of columns. Um, the first column is, um, actually, it's the second column, um, shows what our adopted 2012 rates are. Um, the first, um, area is what our monthly service charge is. And basically, our monthly service charge pays for me, uh, reading the meters every month, sending out our barrels, treating our base, um, infiltration and inflow. And then the second group of, um, uh, in this chart, shows the different volume charges by customer class. And I can see single-family, multifamily, and commercial. Presently, they all have the same volume charge and how that's gonna change over time through 2017. And then you can see for our fast foods and our restaurants, their rates in 2012 are higher than, than the others. And they're, um, well, in particular, the restaurants are proposed to actually decrease over time because they will no longer be charged that surcharge. Um, the other thing that we are revising is for our significant, um, industrial users, our extra strength surcharges, the dollars that those folks are gonna pay per pound is also gonna be increasing. That's that next group of, um, of rows in the, uh, in the, um, table. And then for our unmetered residential customers, these are our flat-rate customers. Most of these folks are, were in TDRs outside the city limits and they're paying a, a flat sewer rate. Um, those folks are, are also gonna have increases over time. Moving on to the overall comparison of our typical sewer bills, um, between all these different user classes. Um, you can see, um, for our single-family metered folks, um, they're using, on average, about five thousand gallons a month. And in 2012, their bill is around twenty-two dollars and eight cents. And they're gonna be going up to thirty-five dollars and eighty cents in 2017 for an overall rate increase of sixty-two percent. Our multifamily folks are, um, those use around twenty-six thousand gallons a month, currently at around eighty-one ninety-three a month, going up to about a hundred and forty-one, an overall rate increase of seventy-two percent. Similarly, our small commercial, um, are going up seventy-one percent. And, um, the reason that these folks have a higher rate increase in our single-family residential is because the volume charge makes up a higher, uh, portion of that overall bill, um, because they also pay a monthly minimum, and that's a much lower percentage of the overall bill. Our fast food, um, restaurants are gonna see a, a decrease in 2013, but then they're gonna start going back up. So in 2014, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, and their overall rate increases around forty-two percent. And then, uh, folks at, um, restaurants are going to actually have a fifteen percent rate increase over this five-year period. And then their single-family metered, um, have, will have a similar rate increase of around fifty-nine percent. And then the last row in this table shows what we presented to council previously, what the overall, um, uh, overall rate increase for the fund was. And, um, and you can now see the differences in the different rates that each different customer class is going to be paying based upon their usage of the system and the different, the differences in their, um, what they send to our treatment plants. And that was quick. Um, I, um-
Councilmember Santos. Can you go back to the last slide?
Sure.
Could you go over the multifamily and the small commercial mix, you skin? You said something about the charges, but I'm not sure that I understood.
So there's two components that make up your bill every month. One is, one is the monthly minimum, which if you go to the table before that one, one, the very first row says all metered customers' monthly service charge. So every bill that goes out, say in 2013, pays eight, eight dollars and fifty cents a month. And then you have a volume charge continuing on down to a column. For multifamily, it will be three dollars and forty-six cents per thousand gallons. So if you, if you are a, a high user, you have more proportion of your bill that is going to, um, come from your volume charge than if you're a single-family residential customer. And the volume charge overall is going up higher. It's going up seventy-six percent versus the monthly service charge overall is only going up thirty-six percent. So that's why you see the differential between single-family residential and the, and the multifamily and small commercial because they, they have more of a volume charge because they're sending more wastewater to the treatment plant. So, so, so-
Small commercial may not necessarily do that.
It's due to average bills that folks are, are paying.
It just seems that the increase for those two are quite high compared to the increases for the others.
If you refer, if you go, if you look at this table here, they're all paying the same volume charge. It's just that they're sending more, so their bill's higher, and, um, they're, they're all paying the same volume charge rate.
Okay.
That's, that's what this table is showing. So for instance, in 2015, everybody is gonna pay four dollars and seventy-one cents per thousand gallons, whether you're s- small commercial, multifamily, or a single-family.
Okay.
Councilmember Kennedy.
I understand what you just said, but the fact that multifamily and small commercial, their increase will be over seventy percent, I find really quite frightening and distasteful personally.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm gonna have a hard time with that part.
Councilmember.
So I guess we better move this, yeah?
Hey, before we move this, uh, I'd like to disclose that I am a restaurant owner, and I would be helped from this due, uh, thing. Uh, you know, and I never did quite stick fit with this, but we always had to pay twice for our water, once it comes in and once it goes out. And the fact that because we're a restaurant, even though forty percent or forty-five percent of our water is used for brewing, we still had to pay the full restaurant charge on all that because it's one line. But anyway, I'm gonna recuse myself from-
Councilmember Santos.
Well, then we'd have to recuse ourselves because we're raising rates on ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. But if you want to do that, Mayor, it's up to you.
Well-
Because you really, he's really happy.
Really, I do that for a second. I mean, to me, it's five or six hundred dollars. I mean, it's, it's a lot of money. So. I don't know. Do, do you have a comment on that, Eugene?
Mayor and Council, um, not really. I mean, it's just the standard, whether or not you can be objective on this vote and whether, um, your position as a restaurant owner would affect your ability to be objective. And that's really a decision for you.
Well, I, I think I'll just be safe and, uh, you know, I know I could probably be objective, but it just, it doesn't look good, so I'm gonna accuse myself.
It's all yours.
Thanks.
Wait for the mayor. And everyone's lighting up to speak. Councilmember Whit.
I think I'll just start off with a comment that although these are, it's kind of a sticker shock, I believe that as it was presented to us in the previous discussions, we really don't have an option on this. It, this is what it costs. So with that, I will move item nine, are we B? 9B.
Minus the restaurant comp, I mean, without the restaurant, we have to do it, the restaurant component, or is just not gonna vote on everything?
It's apparent that the mayor has recused himself in the entire-
Okay, I'll from the entire thing. Okay. I'll second the motion. The other comment that I wanted-
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you. The other comment that I wanted to make is that, um, the reason for raising the rates is that we need to raise capital over time in small increments to pay for the improvements that are necessary. When you have infrastructure, you can't just decide, oh, well, we'll wait and figure out how to pay for it with an extremely large bond sometime in the future. Um, so there, there is a very good reason for this, and it was, um, presented previously with a, um, I mean, we have to have some capital to pay this back. Um, and, and that's why I'm voting yes, because I'd rather have, you know, treated water in an, in a plant that works.
And Mayor Protem Santos and Councilmember Levison, keep in mind, this is a combination of cash and bonding. And so what I was gonna add at the end was next steps with council would be to, uh, this is all in anticipation of, of, uh, going back to our citizens in November of 2013 and having a successful, um, election and, um, having the citizens, um, prove us on our ability to bond for a portion of these, these improvements. And so the next steps would be bringing that back at the beginning of next year, um, with those ordinances and, um, having that on the ballot for next November. So it's portion is bond, twenty-eight million, and the rest of it's cash.
Councilmember Bagley. Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. Um, two things. One, I think that if there is a city, uh, cost to tax to get rid of our sewage, I, I think it's, I think this is a good thing. I am, I am pro-removal of sewage. Um, I, I, I just think it's, I mean, it's just something we have to do, I think. And the other thing is, I'm just thoroughly disappointed that, that you feel that total kidal nitrogen content for our children at fifty milligrams per level is just, I'm just kidding, I have no idea what, what that means. But I thought the report was very thorough and well done. Thank you.
And one final thing, I just want to make a point, one last thing, because I keep getting messages from the back, is that we also, this, these rates are to cover our debts, our debt payments on these, sale of these bonds.
Anyone else? Well, oh, Councilmember Whit.
This is the fiscally responsible thing to do. It is the fiscally responsible thing to do. And also, we have an obligation federally that we have to upgrade this plant. So there, there's no way out of this, is what I have to say.
And that's, if you read this report, we're not the only ones facing it.
Well, the only thing I was gonna say is that this, you know, as we have, other councils before us have had really good water plant, uh, whether it's, uh, the invention of the water board to wastewater treatment plant that has served us very well over the last, what, fifty, sixty years almost? Um, you know, this is, this goes beyond us in our lifetime. Well, I'm gonna live to be a hundred, hopefully, so you never know. Um, but again, it, it, this is looking towards the future and the infrastructure that we have here, which is important for the next generations of people that'll come and are born here in Longmont. So I'll be voting yes on this as well. If there's no other discussion, it's been moved in second, let's vote. It passes six to zero with Mayor Coons absent. And Mayor, I see him talking. Here he comes. And I stand relieved.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. Try to get you a stick.
Okay. Your next item removed was 9C, and I believe that is, um, Kim Schuger will be answering questions on that.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I have a que, a couple of questions. Um, when you're talking about, um, methodology, and I guess I may not have in previous sessions asked this correctly to get, um, an answer I was looking for. When we're, there is some, there was an assumption in previous presentations that somehow people who live in multifamily housing do not use parks or don't have a need for, for future parks. Do we have any data to back that up?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Levison, um, we do not have actual data for this city, and we are asking our consultant for, that's developing the park recreation and Charles Master Plan, to look into that issue and provide us some more data.
And then the assumption made in the methodology section that says greater square footage of a residence typically indicates a larger family size. Larger family size within a residence, the larger the likely impact that the resident of that residence on the park system. That also makes assumptions that we don't have data for. We don't know if there are two people banging around in a house that's three thousand square feet. I mean, the, the past trend actually has been larger and larger homes with fewer and fewer occupants. So do we have any data that gives us any relationship at all to the square footage of either a single-family residence or, um, multifamily, um, houses, apartments that would be, you know, of a certain square footage?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Levison, um, there's a lot of literature that suggests that, but once again, we are gonna be looking more into how it pertains to the city of Longmont.
Okay. So in conclusion, it looks like we're gonna pass some interim fee that we don't really have any data to support. And I, that's not really a question for you. That's kind of a, um, a statement. And, um, and then, let's see.
and then, let's see. So the other assumption is that the average size of residential, the assumption for the calculating the fee was also that the average size of a, a multifamily unit is nine hundred and fifty-eight square feet, but the argument that I saw from, um, proponents of this change would be that the proposal is that we need more larger-sized luxury apartments, and that this is a inhibition on, on building those kind of units. So do we know what, I mean, you know, we have units in the pipeline, but is this, the assumption is made that these are gonna be nine hundred and, on average, nine hundred and fifty-eight square foot units?
Mayor Coombs and, and Councilmember Levinson, just a couple of things. I, I think the nine hundred, uh, square foot is, is really the aggregate of the current housing stock in the city, and so what we're basing this on is the actual housing in the city, and not trying to, uh, predict necessarily what particular size might be built in the future. So that's, and that gives more stability to how you are basing your fee going forward into the future. I, I did also wanna comment, if I could, on the, the issue of multifamily and the number of people per square foot or the number of people per house. Really what's happening, um, our, our current fee, uh, assuming council acts on this one tonight, the current fee, uh, another way of looking at it, if you will, is that, um, I believe it's, in, in many ways penalizes multifamily dwelling units, which are, which are typically much smaller in square footage than a single-family residential, again, without any basis for doing that either. In other words, a, currently today, a multifamily pays the same a single-family, and it's typically half the size. What this, what this recommendation from the staff is going forward is that there is no discrimination on the, the, uh, type of housing unit, and in other words, that all housing units pay the same on a square foot basis. We're simply aggregating it though between, uh, single-family, multifamily. And so I think there's also some, um, equity issue there as well. Again, just something to consider as you are looking at this particular issue. I'm not suggesting that it's necessarily, um, um, perfect. There is no perfect answer, I don't believe in this, but I do believe that there is some rationale on looking at, uh, the square footage of a dwelling unit and not trying to make a decision based on whether it's multifamily or single-family on how that should be charged.
So, but the, what we're, what we're asking to do tonight is to, um, lower both fees and then look at per door, no matter what size your multifamily is, you pay one fee.
And Councilmember Levinson, you're correct on that, and, and I think, as Kim has mentioned, as we try to complete and work through the master plan, one of the refinements that we will consider is, should we try to charge a fee tied specifically to the square footage of an individual unit? That's a refinement that, that either may or may not make sense. This isn't, though, unlike some of your other system development fees, that, for instance, um, on the water, uh, all single-family houses pay the same water fee irrespective of whether it's a two thousand square foot house or a four thousand square foot house. Alternatively, though, on water, multifamily does pay a different rate, um, or, excuse me, a different fee. And so I think what we're trying to do is bring some balance to how all the fees are set across the city and acknowledge that, um, multifamily and single-family are treated differently, um, in, in many of our fees.
I guess I disagree with the implicit assumption that if you're in a multifamily unit and you're living in a thousand square feet or less, that you have less need for parks than if you were in a single-family home and you had outdoor, private outdoor space. To me, that's, you know, I lived in New York City for many, many years, and that would mean that basically besides building Central Park, you know, the borough of Manhattan should not need any other parks, you know? And that, I, if you talk to people in New York, they value their parks, a lot of other cities value their parks, and so I think that that's just an assumption that's, you know, patently incorrect with no data to, to, to back it up, so, um, and I'm not really in favor, I wanna just go on record saying I'm not in favor of doing interim fee when we're, um, looking at, um, revamping, um, the overall look of, um, operations and maintenance and, and build out of parks, too. And I know I've been outvoted on this before, I just wanted to state again for the record that I'm not in favor of doing something, um, in an interim basis until we have, um, you know, some larger picture.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's not so much being, going on record that you're against this, Councilmember Levinson, it's filibustering. And I don't recall, I don't recall here, uh, I don't recall anyone ever saying that because you live in an apartment complex, you don't need a park. And to compare Longmont to, you know, New York City, which millions of people, and yes, they have parks, but, you know, within our park system, uh, within our apartments, the multifamily housing that we do have, there are pocket parts of those, those, uh, um, apartment units do have. So to say that there aren't gonna be any parks at all is rather, um, an assumption and no data to back it up either. So I would move ordinance two thousand twelve dash sixty.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't, I don't look at this as who needs the parks or who uses the parks ultimately. I look at it as who owns the property when it first is developed. So I think it's a, I think it's a fallacious argument to say that, well, I, I guess, I guess we shouldn't, I don't look at it as who uses the parks, single-family residences or multiple-family residences. I look at it as who owns the land when it's getting developed? And it's a developer, it's their land, they don't live there, but they gotta do something to, to develop it. And right now, by making them pay a per-door fee for the parks, regardless of how many people end up there, developer here compared to developer there, meaning single-family developer versus multi-residence developer, the developers we're treating with a disparity that doesn't seem quite fair. And worse, we're treating the developers so that it actually inhibits the growth of apartments, which Longmont is currently lacking. And so, uh, I, I view it that way. I don't think it's, again, I don't think it's about who uses the parks or who doesn't use the parks, it's just who pays for the parks? And I don't think it's fair that, that, uh, we disproportionately require those who build high-density units to supplement our parks and the enjoyment, enjoyment of our parks. And I just think that this is a more fair way of looking at it. I guess the only other fair thing would be put chain link fences and barbed wire around our parks and you pay a buck whenever you go, but I don't think we're gonna actually get that done, so I think this is the best solution for now.
I'd like to say, you know, this might not be the absolute best, but it's moving in the right direction from where we were. You know, no one's ever gonna have the perfect system, you know, should I be per square foot? I mean, no one can predict, you know, is one couple, elderly couple, gonna move into a four-bedroom luxury apartment and not use the parks? I mean, we're just not predictable, those things are gonna be used in the future, so that's hard to do. You know, I kinda think that it's, it's a fair thing moving forward, you know, we kinda decided that we can no longer support, you know, four and a half acres of park per thousand people, uh, because we can't maintain them, and so, you know, at the last meeting, we decided to, um, to throttle back our, our park fees, and, uh, you know, maybe this might not be the absolute best, fairest way, but it's a lot more fair than what we had before, so I'm gonna support it. All right, we've got a motion, a second. Shall we vote? All right, passes six to one with Councilmember Levinson descending.
Mayor Coombs, um, the next item on your agenda is general business, eleven A, the naming opportunities for the new museum auditorium. I believe Wes is here to address this.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I have a short presentation, um, to go through about the naming opportunities at the new auditorium, uh, for the capital campaign. So I'll go ahead and get started with that.
That's okay. Thank you.
All right, so, um, with our capital campaign beginning very soon, um, we have some key spaces in the auditorium that are great opportunities for naming, um, for funders for the, uh, for the auditorium project. As you know, the, more than half the project has already been funded by a single donor, uh, here in Longmont, and, um, we've named the auditorium after Lyle, after the Stewart family, and there's other spaces in the auditorium that I just would like to go through. In addition to the full building, there's an atrium, um, there's a stage, there's an education commons, and then some smaller spaces, um, commons art block, which is like the hallway, uh, the green room, which is in the back, and the community kitchen. So I have a few renderings. First one is the auditorium, and, um, these numbers, by the way, are based upon, um, we've, we've worked these numbers out with our consultant, we have a consultant, uh, Anna Recker, who we've hired, the Friends of Longmont Museum has hired, to, um, advise us through this process, and so the numbers that you see are coming from, they're kind of, you know, from this region, other naming opportunities that have been offered at other capital projects, and here, in Boulder, and Loveland, and Denver, and so, uh, kind of based on square footage and the kinds of visibility that these spaces have, um, is how we came to these numbers. So this is the full building, um, auditorium number. Stop me if you have any questions as we go through these, um, go ahead. There's a large atrium lobby in the museum, uh, and the amount for naming that is five hundred thousand dollars. The stage, which is, uh, the auditorium, which seats two, two hundred and fifty people, is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the education commons, which is about a twenty-one hundred square foot, uh, space behind the auditorium, uh, which is suitable for smaller exhibitions, meetings, educational kinds of activities, uh, we have for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as well. And then, actually, we don't need to look at that one, but, but, um, so those are the main ones, and then there's the smaller spaces as well, so, um, we're looking for council to approve. We've, we've run this by our advisory board, the museum advisory board, as well as the Friends, um, of Longmont Museum Board, Board of Directors, and they're both groups, have unanimously approved, uh, this, but this is different, this is a little unusual, uh, city buildings aren't typically funded, two private dollars, so that's why we wanna run it by you and get your feedback, input, advice, um, on this project.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's an opportunity that we should, um, look at. Were there any thoughts, are, are the seats in the auditorium, are they movable? Because what I've seen in other, other, uh, venues is that sometimes someone purchases their seat. Was that ever thought of?
That was thought of. In fact, um, that's a key component of our capital campaign, and, uh, there's two sections of seating that I didn't bring forward here because they're for smaller amounts. So there's VIP seats for six thousand dollars each, um, it's our take a seat campaign, and, um, and then there's three thousand dollar level seats as well. So that will give a lot more people an opportunity to support, to support the project and have their name, um, in the auditorium and be recognized.
Well, it's, uh, I don't have a five hundred thousand dollars, a twenty-five, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so maybe I'll just buy a small corner. But I, I, I think that, uh, and there's others in the queue, but I, I think this is a, an opportunity that we, we should not pass up.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor. So is the naming, are the naming rights in perpetuity? Because I know that they just renamed that, that football stadium in, in Denver, so can you resell these every, in a number of times?
Um, Mayor and Councilmember Levinson, it's, they are in perpetuity.
And then, um, so I, I guess I'm, I'm curious, because I, I've seen, um, how would you, um, give attributes when you're naming things? Because when you go to the Dairy Center in Boulder, they have such-and-such gallery, or they have such-and-such theater, but if it's at the Stewart Auditorium, on, would it be listed as Stewart Auditorium, such-and-such stage? Are you gonna give acknowledgement, you know, ongoing acknowledgement if the general auditorium is already named?
So, okay, so Councilmember Levinson, Mayor, we will be naming, there'll be names in those spaces. So you'll have your name in the auditorium, you'll have your name in the atrium lobby, or in the education commons, does that answer your question?
Yeah, but when you, when, I guess when things are, are booked in, you would name the stage that something, an act is appearing on a stage in the auditorium? Otherwise, why would somebody be incented to, to sponsor the stage if they're not gonna get recognition?
Because it'll be recognized over time, two hundred and fifty people sit in that theater to watch a performance, I think, yeah.
There'll be some name over the...
Yes.
Over the, okay, thanks, I, I didn't quite understand that.
Okay. Councilmember Shoney.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I say go forth and raise money. I think it's a great idea, great plan, and I'm looking forward to see who, who everything's named after.
Great. Councilmember Samori.
Can I bring my own seat? I'm just now.
Councilmember Whit.
I would, uh, move that we approve naming opportunities for the auditorium at Longmont Museum and Cultural Center.
All right. Let's vote. Okay, passes seven to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Wes.
So the next item is customer satisfaction survey, review of your final draft, and Rego Leal is here to answer questions.
Good evening, councilor and mayor, Rego Leal, Public Information Officer, and I'm here to get your feedback on the two thousand twelve customer satisfaction survey. If you recall, earlier this year, you directed us to include three additional questions to the basic survey, and so what we've done is, um, tried to capture the intent of your questions. We've, uh, created those questions with the help of staff and the help of the National Research Center, who have vetted and edited and put it into its final form, so I'm here basically just to get your reaction and our feedback, and if you have none, then we'll just start, uh, the mailing process tomorrow morning.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you. I was in one of the multicultural action plan focus groups, um, last week, and someone actually brought up, um, one of the mem, one of the people around the table, whether or not we ever ask a question about, you know, how comfortable, if you are an ethnic minority, how comfortable and inclusive do you think our community is? And I don't really see that represented in that, I mean, there is, there are some questions that sort of, um, dance around that, um, but I don't see anything that, um, actually addresses that, that issue, and I don't know, that's not something we really brought up before, but I just wanted to mention it because that was a, a question that, that was discussed around my table. The one other question I had is that, um, when we're looking at the mall redevelopment question, um, I think that most people would agree about providing some level of financial assistance, but do people understand how much, I mean, if it means, you know, how much percentage of the project? I think that that question might be better crafted with, do you, uh, support, you know, X, Y, Z percentage of the financing coming from public sources? Because that would let people, you know, it doesn't really give you a qualifier. That's the only thing that I would, um, uh, look at, um, to be more fine-tuned.
Councilmember Whit.
Am I to understand that these are already, are already printed up and they're ready to mail tomorrow?
No, uh, they are not printed, what, what would happen tomorrow is the pre-notification postcard would be mailed, so there's a time gap between when the notification postcard is mailed, uh, gives us time to print it and then put it in the mail in about a week or so.
Okay, thank you.
So there are, there are opportunities to change, in other words.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I would move that we, uh, direct staff to just, uh, approve the final draft as is.
Well, you know, if we have the opportunity to change something and we get more information by getting, uh, a better refined question, I don't see any problem with, um, you know, if that's not really burdensome thing to add. Could you answer that, Sandra?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. First of all, I wanted to answer Councilmember Levison's question. Question number four actually does talk a little bit about the sense of community and the openness and acceptance to the community towards people of diverse backgrounds. So we do actually survey on some of that. It's difficult for us, they also fill out at the end the demographic information so that we have an understanding of who it is that's filling it out. So I didn't want you to think that that was not included in the survey, because it is. The other question around the incentives, we dissected this in a whole heck of a lot of ways. We talked about incentives for infrastructure, other areas outside of Twin Peaks Mall, we tried to clarify and reduce, and clarify and reduce, and in the end, what ended up happening is National Research Center suggested, as well as our Economic Development Department, that if we keep it general around, do you generally support incentives, that that would be something that would be a worth, something worthwhile? Because it really is up to the council to depend on each and every single project what that incentive looks like and what's appropriate for Longmont. So, we actually have had, I would say, multiple conversations about this specific question in trying to really bring it down to something, but because we don't have a specific project that we're asking about, we're just asking general feeling around incentives. And I would say that most of our residents have a general feeling around incentives, either they like them, they don't like them, they appreciate the way that the Longmont City Council either does or doesn't administer those. So, I just wanted to explain why there's not more very specific pieces. This isn't a ballot issue, this isn't something that we're trying to find a directive around similar to the parks question. So the parks and open space master planning question, you may notice, has some very specific guidelines because it matches what they're doing in the parks and open space master planning process, so.
Thank you, Sandy, that really clarifies it in my mind. Councilmember Levison?
Actually, that's why I brought up the question, because it seems in a pretty stark contrast where we're asking very generally about the mall, where we do have some very substantive figures already. You know, we have cost estimates of over $80 million, you know, we had things in our packet today that talk about, with the updated plan, possible tax increment impacts and that sort of thing. So, it would just seem like if somebody was asked, you know, the total cost of the mall is XYZ, what percentage would you feel, how strongly would you support? I'd like to see the question, I guess, worded more like the parks questions, because we do know exactly the figures now, and we already approved stuff tonight based on those figures.
So, on the mall issue, we are still in the negotiating process in terms of the numbers. So that's one issue in the sense that we're having to deal with that. I think the other thing I would add is that this question is specifically broader than just the mall. It uses the mall as an example, but it's really getting at a broader sense of the issue. And that's the way the question's written in this case.
Hey, any other discussion?
Mayor, can I add one last thing?
Sure.
Councilmember Levison, we have asked questions about multicultural issues in the off-year surveys as well, with a lot of feedback, specific feedback in that area. So we can, or I can share the results with you and the rest of council from those other surveys where we asked very specific questions about those very issues that you bring up.
All right, thank you, Rego. I guess we've got a motion, it's been seconded, let's vote. Okay, passes seven to zero.
Great, thank you.
Hey, next is, oh, I think it's that one more segment.
Your next item is CML Policy Committee Discussion and National League of Cities Voting Delegate, Sandy Cedar.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager, and I'll try to keep this as quick as possible. So we have an upcoming policy committee meeting, and Councilmember Levison and I were in contact around some of the different proposals that came from the various cities. You may remember that you actually asked for CML to consider the idea of go-kart kinds of funds, the lottery funds, going towards K through 12 education. That has been placed on the agenda, so there will be, I am sure, a lively discussion about that at the policy committee. But in the meantime, there have been certainly several proposals from, I think it's the town of Mead, as well as one from the city of Greenwood Village, just talking about some of the different proposals. Now, sometimes we go and just give a general conversation around these at the policy committee. I should say that any legislation that comes through that is actually introduced in January, before we take any kind of official position, comes back to this board to be able to take that position. So, whatever you commit to today, just as general philosophy, is not binding as far as what the legislation actually looks like when it shows up, because we'll bring that back to you if it's something that we find to be either contrary to your policies or something that's important for Longmont. So let me first talk about the policy committee. In the policy committee, there've been a couple of different proposals. The first one is from Greenwood Village, and a request to raise the maximum fines for municipal courts from $1,000 to over $5,000. So when I asked our own city prosecutor and our own judge around what does that look like for Longmont, and is that something that we would support as a staff, their response was what I had listed here on the executive summary, which basically that what happens is that people then will generally go for more of a court trial, though instead of paying the fines, we already have a lot of folks that have trouble paying $1,000 fines already, and considering the situations at our jails, municipal court fines, we're not talking about felonies and things like that, you are talking about usually building inspection, traffic, those types of things. So, our staff was not particularly supportive of that, and that's an issue I wanted to bring for you so that you could give your feedback to Councilmember Levison prior to the meeting on the 19th.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. What was their rationale for proposing this?
Mayor Coombs, Council, Mayor Potem Santos, it really was just the idea that it hasn't been raised in a whole, you know, whole heck of a long time, and that they really felt that an update was needed to those fines.
Sounds like a revenue raiser.
Councilmember Rip?
Yes. I, I will make a motion that we not support the proposal to increase fines.
Should we vote on that? Councilmember Levison?
Before we vote on it, I guess there can be a lot of movement on discussion, and so, when I'm in policy committee, I understand that we're voting on this specific thing, but in general, is the position that no way, no how ever raise these fees? If they say, we want to look at maybe phasing it in, or looking at getting some other, some variation of it, does this just mean anything that involves raising court fees is out? That's what I just wanted to make sure.
Councilmember Samari?
No way, no how, no time.
Councilmember Bagley? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't have any clients that ever ask me, what's the fine? They usually say, what's the jail sentence? What am I looking at? And I always think, and as I'm sitting there with clients, I'm like, that's the, I mean, I know that a judge's opinion is that, you know, Judge Vande he says that, you know, the courts aren't there to raise revenue. But it still raises revenue, and judges have discretion, they don't have to hit you with the fine. I'm going to probably vote with the rest of council, but I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing to raise the fees, because it would raise revenues. I don't think necessarily that most, I don't know if most people would go to trial as a result of the fine. And what was your sense on whether or not other cities were going for it?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, I have not necessarily heard from any other community. This was pretty much sent out from CML as part of that process, and I haven't really been contacted about it. Oftentimes, if it's a very controversial piece, as you may see in the next set of ones from Mead, then that's the type of thing that I'll see a little chatter, but I hadn't heard any. It's possible that our city attorney has heard some other things in his circles instead.
What have you heard in your circles, Mr. Mayor?
Mayor and council, so I attended Metro City Attorney's lunch maybe two weeks ago, and this proposal did come out, and I would say, strong consensus was a reaction similar to what the judge and prosecutor had.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess we're ready to vote.
So no vote needs, voting for?
Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, the other side of legislation came from the town of Mead, and it came a little later in the process, so I wish I had a little more time to do more in-depth analysis, but this actually came to me during, at the same day as the deadline to get information to you in the council packet, and I felt like it was important for you to see it. Basically, it is a set of oil and gas legislation proposals, including air emissions from oil and gas wells, requirements for air emissions, location of oil and gas wells, oil and gas severance taxes, as well as the payment of taxes collected on oil and gas sales. As I think everybody in the state of Colorado, as well as most of the nation knows, the city of Longmont is currently engaged in a lawsuit around our own voluntary regs. And so generally, I do believe that the city council has taken a stance that it's supportive of localities being able to regulate as appropriate specifically on land use. However, these proposals are pretty specific. Of course, we wouldn't see any, you wouldn't have to vote on any kind of legislation until you actually saw it as far as a position. But I'm not, I guess my recommendation would say that any kind of legislation that does, that is consistent with your belief that land use regulations can stay in the hands of localities and specifically city councils, is a good way to go.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I would be of the opinion that we take no position, and just be neutral, since we are in a lawsuit. Council has its rules and regulations that we passed, whether you voted for them or didn't. Our hand has been shown, so there's no need to take more of a position. So I would move that we just stay neutral on the town of Mead's proposal.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And I did not get that particular edition in my packet. Was it sent by email?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, no, I was able to get it in under the deadline. You should have had it attached as part of your.
Okay, well, just exactly tell me one more time what it is.
Okay, so they wanted to do a whole set of legislation.
They?
The town of Mead.
Okay.
And they requested CML's support in, first of all, capping air emissions from oil and gas wells, and requiring that there be specific oil, air emission standards for oil and gas wells. The second one would be that the location of oil and gas wells is 1,000 feet from an occupied home or school. The third one is the oil and gas severance taxes, and the idea that there would be a different split between severance taxes for those communities who have oil and gas rigs in their communities, as opposed to the employees who work on them, which is currently how severance taxes are computed. And then the last one was the payment of taxes collected on oil and gas sales. So the fact that the municipality should receive some sort of cut as part of that sales tax. Some of these are contrary to the regulations that you passed, some of them have never been discussed, and so it was sort of an interesting proposal from the town of Mead. There is actually nothing wrong with deciding to go neutral on these, considering the lawsuit that's happening in Longmont.
And then, this is a request of, by Mead, of who exactly?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, of the Colorado Municipal League.
To support them.
To support them, or even to write the legislation for them.
Okay, I understand.
And so what happens is, CML then takes under consideration all of the opportunities, the policy committee makes recommendations about what they'd like to see A or N A from these, and then those recommendations are given to the CML Executive Board, of which Councilmember Levison is a member.
Neutral's good.
Okay, I guess we've got a motion, it's been seconded, let's vote. Okay, passes seven to zero, we stay neutral on that.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, there's one other piece that I'd like to bring up that just came up over the last couple of days with respect to CML specifically. So as you may or may not know, CML has traditionally supported the current oil and gas regulations as they sit. They also support the localities' right to be able to create those regulations as appropriate, but those things sometimes come into conflict. When having conversations about the regulations on the state level, as well as the situation around regulations on the local level, is there any specific position that the city council would like to take, or would you like to stay neutral on those conversations as well? Please understand that what that means is that CML may come out saying that they support the state process the way it is now, which is consistent with what they've said for years and years. Since the regs were created a few years ago, or I guess revised a few years ago, they have consistently said, hey, this works really well for a lot of folks, and so it is really those of us who have very populous areas that this has become a concern for most recently. And so I do believe that those kinds of comments are starting to come out, and there is certainly a rub around that, because they support local control, at the same time they currently support the current regulatory process as well. Any comments for Councilmember Levison around that?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, I would still say the same thing, neutral. I've heard whispers in the winds of things may be changing at the state, things maybe not be changing at the state. Again, we've played our hand, and we've stated our position, so I would say we're just neutral. But I would make that, I make that a motion, that we just stay neutral regarding anything regarding oil and gas.
I guess I am slightly disagreeing with that, and I see being neutral could be, you know, since we are in a lawsuit, but why wouldn't we want to get CML on our side if we truly believe that cities should have the right to control zoning and control industrial? I don't see anything wrong with having a regulatory body that we're a member of helping us out, if they believe in the same thing.
Councilmember Levison?
And I think that in the collective thinking of policy committee, sometimes a neutral position can actually be counted as a negative with other communities. That they may look at it as not supporting, actively not supporting, even a philosophical solidarity position. Whether or not any of those individual proposals from Mead are something that our council would vote for, our own regulations, we do have to think about supporting other communities if they decide to go down a different path as far as what they feel they want to look at for their, what's in the best interest of their cities, as far as the number of feet for setbacks or other policies. So, in some respects, if we are going to perhaps ask the CML community to support us, and stand with us with our lawsuit, then there's a bit of tit for tat sometime. And so taking a neutral position may give an indication that we are less than fully supporting of every other city's right to do what we've exercised already.
City Attorney Eugene May?
Mayor and council, I had talked to Sandy about this early in the week, and it came to my attention that the CML submitted a position during the CLGCC-sponsored setback stakeholder process, where CML stated that they don't believe that the current regime, setback regime, needs to be changed, and that would include a 150-foot setback from residential structures. And looking forward, I understand CLGCC is going to be undertaking setback rulemaking in January, and just wanted to raise this to council's attention, that, you know, that could very well be the position of CML in those setback rulemakings. And at least from my discussions with certainly front-range municipalities, I don't think that that accurately reflects the beliefs of those constituents. And so to at least have that conversation at CML, whether their constituents who they represent, certainly in a formal agency rulemaking, is accurately reflected by saying that they don't believe that the current setbacks need to be changed. And this would be within the context of CLGCC rulemaking, and not necessarily via local regulation.
Councilmember Santos? Thank you. I don't see a neutral position as telling everyone else to go pound sand, whether you want to join a friend of Longmont or against Longmont. You know, that's up to each municipality, and what I'm, what I think of being neutral is, I'm not trying to. neutral is, I'm not trying to ruffle any more feathers than we already have. Again, if someone wants to propose a two-mile setback, you know, that's something that, again, we have our recommended, again, and I'll, I'll state it again, recommended setbacks. If you want administrative review, it's recommended 750 feet. I, I think being neutral, we, I think we're done. And if other, again, if other cities want to jump on board or support us.
Great.
Don't want to support us.
I understand.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember, or Mayor Potem Santos, one thing that I did want to point out also is that Meade is asking for the state regulations to change. Meade is not asking to have the right to change them themselves. They're asking for the state's regulations to change to meet these wishes, which none of which are one things that you addressed in your, in your specific regulations. They're not talking about local control specifically. They're asking for the state to basically change all of the regs in order to become, I think, more aligned with what certainly people are expressing on the front range, which is what Eugene is saying. I should point out that CML is in a very tough position here because most of their communities have worked well with the current oil and gas regulations, that this is a relatively new phenomenon since we have found additional oil deposits underneath front-range heavily populated towns. So to some extent, they're in a very tough position here around, I would, I would wonder if put to a poll, whether a majority of their constituents would indeed say that yes, those oil and gas regulations are working well for us. So I, I can see where it warrants discussion. It's not on the policy committee agenda that I have seen so far. It's mostly just a conversation here so that we're prepared in case that comes up.
Well, I don't see the point of having these discussions and polling all the communities so that they actually get what the true sense is, what communities are for these types of conversations, and, you know, I just don't see a downside to getting those discussions done. CML, that doesn't mean that, you know, everything's going to go our way or for or against this, but I think it's healthy for CML to have those discussions instead of making policy blindly, thinking that this is what their constituents want when they don't have any idea until they poll all the constituents.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have a love-hate relationship with the state. But I, I, I mean, just random thought, I don't understand, you know, I mean, like, for example, we're in the middle of a lawsuit, you know, the heat's on, and whether you're for or against ballot initiative 300 coming up, you know, you'll notice that those who are for ballot initiative 300 are passing out a pamphlet that has a picture on it of a fracking well, a fracking rig in Meade, 351 feet away from the residential neighborhood. You just think that they just toned it down just a tad. My, I mean, another thing is, I, I, the regs, as they're currently written, especially as it pertains to setbacks, I think are inadequate. Part of the reason why we're in this mess is because I think they're inadequate. I think that, I think that CML, I mean, yeah, before, we were in a situation where when you're driven in the county, in the countryside, even in cities, but away from harms, I don't think it was a big deal. But I think that CML, I would like to basically say that we do support CML in saying that they should relook at the regs. Even the governor said that he's willing to relook at certain regs. We don't tell him what to do or how to do it, but we just tell CML that status quo isn't okay and move forward. Another reason why we're in this mess right now, and I call it a mess, is because you've got the far extremes. You know, the governor and the state saying, no, 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 we're going to sue you because you've gone too far. And you've got the environmentalists and conservationists saying, no, 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 you didn't go far enough. And moderation needs to prevail, you know, common sense needs to prevail. And I think that if we just tell them that, yeah, CML, that's your job, go, go represent the cities, it's not good enough, revisit it, I, I think that's appropriate. Not telling them how, but just saying that if it comes up for discussion, status quo is not currently working, so it's okay to talk about it. And I know that our current elected officials, they think that they gave up or talked about it in 2008, and they think that they're all done. I don't think they're done. I think that they need to keep working on it, and it shouldn't be put in a lapse to city council. So that's where I'm at. I think we should tell CML to, I don't think we should be neutral on this one, not necessarily say it's a bad thing, just say, um, talk about it. I think that CML needs to hear that message, especially since, like it or not, we're at the epicenter, we're leading this.
Councilmember Whit.
I, I feel that we need to remain neutral on this, not necessarily because we are in a lawsuit. I think, as Mayor Potem has mentioned, our, we've shown our hand. The individual aspects that will be discussed, we don't have consensus on council one way or another on everything that's going to come up. And I'm, I do not want to say, yeah, go, y'all hold back, you go, Councilmember Levison and represent us, because I, I, there are things that we were not able to come to consensus on as a council, and therefore, I would request that we remain neutral in this discussion because we do not have a consensus on council. And, and I do know that Councilmember Levison does have strong opinions that do not necessarily affect all of this council, and therefore, I would request as, as a sign of courtesy to the other members of council that we remain neutral.
Councilmember Levison.
Actually, Councilmember Whit, you know, I have followed through every step of the way on what council had asked me to do at policy committee. So, you know, whether it, my opinion, my personal opinion doesn't come into this because if we decide as a group, that's what I do. So, you know, please don't make an assumption maybe that, you know, I'm, I'm going to go rogue or something. I won't. But I, I think that the aspect of what Meade is putting out there is to piggyback off of what Councilmember Bagley said, start a conversation with the state. It may just be that, you know, Meade says a thousand feet, and a bunch of cities at policy committee said, okay, well, let's see, you know, it's beginning of a conversation and negotiation. So if there's no position on the majority of the policy committee to say, we want to talk about a thousand feet, that's not saying it's going to happen, but it may start a conversation with the state. If there is no information, if everybody decides to stay neutral, and there are five votes, you know, to go for it, then you may get an aberration of what the true membership, you know, of the policy committee wants to do even. So saying neutral means I don't vote and I get up and say, I'm neutral.
Mayor Coombs.
And so, I mean, are we Switzerland?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison, I, I think you had already determined the Meade piece.
Right, yes.
I think what we're talking about is, do you, and you're welcome to revisit, of course. But I think what we're talking about specifically is, do you want to request CML to have a broader conversation around their stance on the current state regs?
Yes, right.
Because Councilmember Levison is in an excellent position to bring that forward to the board if that's a direction that you would like for her to go, to have the conversation or to poll people or whatever that looks like. I want for you to understand that CML is out there saying that, you know, the regulations are fine, the way that they are, and that was what kind of raised the red flag for Eugene, because at the same time, they also support your right as a council to determine your own local regulations. And so we may not necessarily agree with CML, and that's okay. There have been lots of times in which we don't. But really, it's just how do you want for us to handle this kind of conversation? Is there a message that you want to send with her on this specific piece of what they're saying? Sorry to clarify, that's right.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think, I mean, love you to death, Councilmember Whit, but, I mean, I don't think it's, I mean, I don't, we obviously don't have consensus on council, but to quote, to quote our illustrious former city manager, he states four. You know, so I mean, we're not a, we don't need unanimity, we just need four. And, and it's not about, you know, respect for, for fellow council members, it's about what, what at least I think is right, as far as my vote goes. And the, the reason why we're in this mess, meaning lawsuit, ballot measure 300, is because our state representatives refused to act regardless of the reason, they decided not to do their job and then reacted. And so I think that, I, I just basically think, I mean, if the setbacks were bigger, if certain provisions were made, I still continue to feel that there's a way that the state could have acted first, and we wouldn't have had to deal with this problem at all. I think that on the oil and gas task force, CML, they showed out, but they weren't really participatory, that they were kind of quiet during the whole thing. And, I mean, they're just now starting to go, well, maybe we should take a role in this discussion. Maybe we should go talk to the governor. Maybe we should start engaging in the negotiations. And I think that if Longmont, who again, has kind of stuck their head out there and we're taking some lumps, if we stay neutral and quiet, you know, I mean, who else is going to speak up if not us? And so, I mean, the best possible scenario would be to have CML talk to the state, they come up with regs, and the whole problem goes away, you know, rather than just sticking to the stat that was established before. So I, I think that that could actually be a solution to our woes. So I think we should actually give, vote to give CML the, I mean, we should vote sending the message that CML should negotiate with the state with different regs.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Okay, what I heard from Sandy is not the same issue that I'm hearing you talk about. So I think what I heard is, if we give direction that it is okay for CML to survey the various communities as to what they feel, then that's all, and it's limited to that.
Yeah. Just starting the conversation?
Just starting the conversation, not to negotiate, not to come up with rules and regulations.
Enthusiasm.
Yes. So if our direction to Councilmember Levison is to just say, yeah, CML, if you want to go ahead and survey the various communities to see what they think, then I don't, I don't have an issue with that because it's not putting us on one side or the other, it's just an open conversation. But if it is to negotiate or to endorse other communities' specific rules, then I would say we should stay neutral.
Councilmember Whit.
And I, I think I would agree with what Councilmember Samori is saying. What I don't want to have happen is to send one member of council off and say, go participate in this policy committee and be speaking on behalf of all of us on things that we have not addressed. And that is what I'm concerned about, is that one member of council is going to represent a position that is truly we haven't talked about on council. And I, I would say that anything that we actually have voted on, that is part of our regs, that we supported as a body, absolutely, but if we have not had a conversation about or voted on a specific, like, mm, I'm, I'm not going to come up with a good example at this moment, but stick with what we voted on as our regulations and don't go beyond that, is what I would request.
Councilmember Samori.
Okay. Do you need a direction or a motion?
We, we had a motion on the table already.
To, to stay neutral.
Yeah.
So may I make a final statement?
No, I think we need to vote on that motion.
Okay. So what I would recommend is that if the direction is to just tell CML to survey the various communities to see what they feel, that's good. But if it is to negotiate on any community's behalf or to stress specific regulations beyond what we've supported, then we stay neutral.
You. The other people on the table.
Councilmember Levison. So by, just to make Councilmember Whit comfortable, my idea of neutral is, I don't say anything. That's what it means to me. If there's this discussion, I can sit there and listen and take it all in, and I will take copious notes, but neutral means that I don't stand up one way or another and advocate for or against. And when it comes to voting, I guess I just abstain, I don't vote. That's what my interpretation of neutral is. Except if we amend whatever motion we have on the table, from what I'm hearing from Councilmember Samori, if a discussion comes up to ask for policy committee members to either support or oppose CML to survey the membership on the question of whether or not they get involved in, or to advocate they get involved with rulemaking with COGCC, I'm allowed to vote on that. And that's the position I'm seeing nodding of heads saying, yes, you may vote on that, and we are not going to be neutral on the simple thing with saying, if the question is, CML, would you survey the membership, I can be not neutral but vote yes. And again, when, you know, we had our discussion at CML, the way policy committee generally works is, the communities that bring the proposals do most of the talking. And so when we had our education proposal, I helped present it, Sandy added, we had other communities that jumped on board with comments that were supportive, other communities with comments that were questioning and oppositional, but in the end, it was a conversation. So my, again, to recap, neutral means, don't take a position one way or another, abstain, abstain from the vote, except in a circumstance where if there's a question about, do you want CML to survey membership about whether or not they want to get involved in rulemaking, I'm allowed to vote yes. And I'm not going to vary from that position. And I doubt that we're going to have a time in the policy committee to go glow by glow with an up or down. The way policy committee also works is, it's unlikely there will be an up and down, up or down vote on each of those items that Meade has brought forward. So sometimes it may happen, sometimes it may not, but in the case that it does, my understanding of neutral is, I don't vote.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Do you restate what exactly it is that we're talking about?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, I believe you're no longer talking about the Meade proposals. I believe that the vote was yes to remain neutral, which means do not vote on the Meade proposals at the policy committee, and therefore probably at the board meeting as well. I, I do have a suggestion around the surveying piece. So CML is not going to ask, should we survey our members? If you direct Councilmember Levison to ask CML to survey the members, that would be something that then she has an action to do something with, and that on all of the proposals to remain neutral. This is really discussing the overarching issue around, does CML currently support the current COGCC rules and how that works for the rest of the state? Because if CML is saying, hey, we support these rules, they are speaking on behalf of all cities. And so even though Longmont may jump right behind there and say, that's not the way we feel about it, at this point, we're not in a situation where we can really talk a whole lot about it either. It does seem that perhaps in the policy committee, Councilmember Levison could ask the question, what is CML's position? They can state it, and then if you would like to have the other cities surveyed, direct Councilmember Levison to ask for that survey and pass that any other legislative pieces if you're comfortable saying that that's neutral. That may be a clearer way for her to be able to move forward.
Okay, so, so you're kind of right and kind of wrong. So what I'm hearing is, there's, number one, it sounds like we do have consensus, or perhaps on asking CML to get the input of other municipalities. And two, the real question is, do we or do we not feel that the state regs are currently adequate? And if the question is, we don't know, this, should CML engage in a process to collect and gather information and take that discussion to the state? That's what it sounds like they're asking. And again, we wouldn't be in this position if people at the state level, CML, elected to. And again, we wouldn't be in this position if people at the state level, CML, elected legislators, et cetera, just would have that discussion and they don't want to have it right now, so make them have it and then it won't be our problem anymore, is what I'm hoping.
And Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, I should mention, CML in this case, on this vote, is not asking us for anything. They're not asking us for a survey, they're asking our opinion there, at this point stating that the COGCC rules are adequate and are something that Eugene flagged as, i- is this something we should bring up in policy committee? They're not asking us to bring it up in policy committee. So, if you would, if you would like to bring this up and have a survey, then you can direct Councilmember Levison to do so. If not, then you don't have to.
City Attorney Eugene May?
Mayor, Councilmember Bush, just started my comments off with quoting the email which Jeff Wilson wrote, and this is what caught my eye. It says, "CML and CCI do not believe that the current regime of 150, 350, 500-foot setbacks defined in COGCC rule needs to be changed." And when I saw that statement and, um, put it up against our recommended 750-foot voluntary standards, I thought that that statement was not in line with, uh, the direction that council chose to go with our regulations and that's why I brought this issue, also knowing that COGCC was going to initiate rulemaking, um, I, I felt that we, we should at least have the conversation here at council, uh, whether we wanted CML to at least consider, um, or reconsider that position.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. I'm so glad that I knew we were going to talk oil and gas tonight. And this is exactly why I say we should be neutral. We should not be initiating anything. If another city wants to, to, to make a motion to survey, let them make the motion. Why are we doing this? We already have, we already, we are already in a lawsuit, potentially going to be in another one. That's why I haven't been, people have asked me to sign on, help, sign this letter, you know, or sign this letter, or sign this letter in opposition to what the governor's done. I didn't sign anything from the very beginning. I didn't sign, I didn't sign a darn thing, whether it was to, um, support one state senator's bill to, to do, you know, to take away severance tax money from, um, or take rights away from cities to, to enact rules and regulations, or another state representative's that have a thousand-foot setback, I thought we should be, stay neutral. We should not be initiating another darn thing. I will not accept the, the friendly amendment, my motion stands as it is.
Councilmember Levison?
So, there's another wrinkle to this that perhaps we haven't thought about, in that if this topic is not, um, discussed, then if we go ahead and ask CML to give us a friend of the court brief to support our position, they, you know, if the membership tells them, stick with what you have and the rules, and their position was the rules are sufficient, then we might lose a very powerful, uh, an access to a very powerful, um, amicus brief, I'm afraid. Um, but opening up this door, a crack, to have everybody say, well, maybe we should consider, um, looking at something different in the rulemaking would be an advantage to our city. So, I'm thinking, people are up and walking around.
So, what does that back to you?
I know, I know, Gabe. Um, so, Councilmember, what I, what I'm thinking is that, um, if this discussion comes up, we're already, um, perhaps losing out on having an ally in our lawsuit. And that's, and, and frankly, you know, if their position is that the, um, the rules are not sufficient to protect cities, then that issue has to come up at policy committee. And if it does, it, we're sort of cutting our nose off if, if we're not able to take, um, some supportive position if they're going to be asked to survey the membership.
Well, the way I look at it is, um, CML has taken a position by saying that setbacks will need to be changed. All we're saying now is, how did you arrive at that? I mean, you didn't poll us, did you? I mean, how could you make that decision without polling the members? And I'm just curious, what are the other cities in the state think and other communities? So, I think it's, since we're members of that, we have a right to know, um, whatever the others thinks, doesn't want to do anything, but it's just getting information, it's getting people talking. So, I don't see a problem with bringing that first piece since they already took the line in the sand and sided with, uh, the current inadequate setbacks.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The reason they did that, because that is what state law is and as legal representatives, they are supposed to uphold what the law is. That's the reason they have taken that position. I think, uh, we should remain neutral. I think that Sarah can certainly say, take, here's what our regulations are and state what those are. I don't think she needs to go any further than that and I think everyone is well aware of what we've done. Um, I am not in favor of COGCC changing their rules and, and so I would be uncomfortable with her, uh, proposing that.
Councilmember Bagley?
Another fracking Tuesday.
Sorry.
That's all right. We still love you, Sandy. I, uh, I guess, I mean, to remind everybody, I mean, we've got, we had three members of council that voted against the, the residential ban, or not the residential ban, the, uh, the, uh, the residential ban, it's late. Only two? Only two? No, there were three, no, there were three. It was a three, four vote. And, and I think that, I mean, so, basically, the four of us that voted for him, the, the voted for the issue on the whole residential, no fracking in our residential zones, um, the question is, what should we convey to CML and the rest of the municipalities in the state and the governor, et cetera, um, that would most be in alignment with what we want, which is just don't frack next to our homes, 350 feet next to our homes. And the question is, they don't want to talk about setbacks and that's because the way it works is that you've got, I mean, what I saw was Jeff Wilson and the heads of COGA and CPA and they all share the same offices and talk to each other and they're buddies. I'm not saying that's a good or bad thing, it's just a fact. And so, do we, are the setbacks adequate? And the answer is no, it's why we did what we did. And so, I think sending, sending the message and just saying, guys, we don't agree that they're adequate, that's the whole reason why we're in this mess. And I think backing down and saying, we're going to be neutral, we're not neutral, we're not, we're up to our eyeballs in this with the, uh, I mean, the whole reason why the ballot initiative is on the ballot in November regarding anti-fracking in Longmont is because both sides are being irrational. And I think that having CML take the stance that we need to relook at the setbacks is a common sense approach. So, I guess we've talked a lot about it, I'm not going to say anymore.
Councilmember Bagley?
No.
Uh, excuse me, Councilmember Samori?
Thank you for calling me Councilmember Santos for a change.
Sorry, it's getting late.
Okay, so, CML is a nascent organization. They know where we stand from the regulations that we passed. How many communities signed the letter that they sent to the governor supporting us? About 80?
Uh, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Samori, I believe that there were 80 elected officials. They weren't from necessarily separate towns and counties, but I believe it was, I think it was 83 elected officials, mayors, councilmembers, commissioners.
From various communities.
From various communities across the states.
Right. So, if CML is aware of that letter of support, then we shouldn't have to give them direction to engage in any kind of communication. They should be aware of it, they should realize that there's a lot of communities that are interested in this topic and that they should be engaging without direction because they're supposed to represent us. So, I will tend to agree that, um, although it'd be nice to have them engaged, I don't know that it's our position to really get them engaged, they should be aware of it and maybe we can send them a tape of this conversation, they can see that they should be aware of it. But, uh, and I'm not, I'm not worried about losing any kind of, uh, friendly brief for the lawsuit because we already have 80 different elected officials supporting us.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Samori, I know that CML is aware of that letter, I forwarded it to them.
Okay, so, that should be enough direction for them to have the lights go on and move forward.
Councilmember Levison?
Since we've had, you know, different winding paths in the conversation, could you please, um, let's, let's, uh, review what the motion is specifically, uh, so we all know what we're voting on.
The motion on the table right now is to remain neutral on this topic because the friendly amendment was not accepted.
Which topic? Is the voter control versus?
No.
No, I don't know what the fight is.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison, my understanding was that the motion was, and of course, Mayor Portem Santos can correct me if I am wrong, but in, with respect to CML's position, that the current regs are appropriate and fine, that the city of Longmont remain neutral in any discussion that regards that.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, it passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, members of council?
Uh, just, uh, the descendants were Brian Bagley, uh, Councilmember Levison, and myself.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I apologize. Just one last little thing that has nothing to do with oil and gas or fracking, it is the National League of Cities Conference that's coming up at the end of November. Um, at this, there's an annual business meeting every year, um, generally they ask for our voting delegates. In this case, since Mayor Coombs is not attending, my understanding is that Mayor Portem Santos will be attending and available for that meeting, which makes him the primary, uh, person that does that vote. Uh, they are also asking for an alternate however, and so, there are a few folks that are attending this year, Councilmember Finley, Councilmember Levison, and Councilmember Samori plan to attend the NLC conference. And what I'm looking for today is, uh, for who you would like to choose as your alternate voter for that conference. Finley, Levison, and Samori. Councilmembers Finley, Levison, and Samori.
Yeah. Now I know why. I never wound voting before.
That's what I'm going to do.
I was going to recommend, since I'm not going, I, I would like to ask, which one of you wants it more, what will you give me? Not really. Uh, no, because I certainly didn't get a bowl of scotch. Um, yes, I, I think I would like to, uh, recommend Councilmember Finley to be our alternate. Thank you.
Councilmember Levison?
Yes, I just want to poll people as to what flight they're taking out because the business meeting starts at 2:30 and could last as long as 4:30 in the afternoon. So, I, I know that there's, you know, the flights I was looking at, there's like a six o'clock flight and if you're on a six o'clock, that's the last flight I think out, so, direct to Denver. So, um, my concern is to make sure that we have somebody if it drags out. Last year, it went, the meeting went until almost 4:30 because there were some big issues that were being discussed and amendments.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison, that's a good point. This meeting is the very last day, it's Saturday and it's at 2:30, it's the very last item on the agenda. So, as long as you, whoever is the, the alternate, and I've checked with Mayor Portem Santos, he is planning to be there for that, but whoever is the alternate does need to be available through the end of Saturday.
Okay, thank you, Sandy.
Um, I guess we need to vote. Bonnie voted for herself, it passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
Uh, I guess it's time for final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to council at this time? Senator Aaron, uh, request final call, public invited to be heard. It's time for, uh, mayor and council comments, Councilmember Whit.
I will get back on the queue for some personal comments, but first, um, we do need to take care of some things that we, we talked about in executive session earlier today. Um, I, I would like to make a motion that we do not, uh, increase the municipal judge's salary at this time. She did receive a 2% increase last year and, uh, two years previous to that, she had a 4% increase since all other, uh, municipal employees got a 1% increase. I think that, um, a holding study at this time would be appropriate.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Sign them, let's vote. Okay, it passes seven to zero. Councilmember Whit?
You know what, I think that probably it would be more appropriate if, Mayor, you made this motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we, um, increase, um, compensation for city attorney Eugene May, uh, in three different categories. One, we bring him up to market on his auto allowance, um, which we need to be about $1,100 and then we also add $2,000 to his deferred compensation and we increase his, um, pay at 5% on, you know, it would be a total of a little over 7%, but the survey said that he was, uh, 13% under market and, uh, like, try to, like to move him to market over a two-year period. And, uh, you know, his review came out, uh, similarly, so, uh, if we had been, if we were sitting in a, we just use the market matrix formation and just took the numbers, he'd have got a 9.4% raise, um, but anyway, that's my motion to, uh, for Eugene's compensation.
Any further discussion? Not, let's vote. Uh, Councilmember Bagley, did you want to make a comment?
You just, just, uh... You don't. Push his vote. Okay. We love you, Eugene, we love you, buddy.
Okay. Okay, it passes seven to zero.
That was it, huh?
Yeah. I could, I'll just talk loud. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The, uh, the, uh, something that, the reason why I think it's appropriate, and we've already voted, the reason why I voted yes was because he's dealt with a lot, and we've all talked about this, he's dealt with the medical marijuana issue, he's the ringmaster for the fracking circus and, uh, there's a lot on his plate and, uh, he's taken a lead on a lot of this stuff and so, uh, he should be compensated for the good job he's doing. And he's still below what other municipalities pay their attorneys. So, uh, it might look like a big raise or pay increase, but not when you compare it to what he has been doing and also with what other attorneys in his position earn. So, uh, it's not us being fiscally irresponsible, it's us rewarding an employee that we want to keep.
Well, I, I kind of look at it as, we are being fiscally irresponsible because, uh, if we did nothing, uh, it would be a flight risk and we'd be spending $35,000 to recruit a new attorney. So, Councilmember Whit?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I got some exciting news today. Um, my mom is going to be, uh, sworn in as an American citizen on Thursday. Really excited. She's missing, uh, being able to vote this year, that's okay. Uh, pretty excited about that, so just wanted to say congratulations to my mom. She's, she's Canadian.
A.
Cool, A. And also, we have one more resident of Longmont and want to congratulate, uh, uh, David Sterns on the birth of his new baby, Jared.
Wow. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yesterday I had the opportunity to go to the Longmont Vansperen Airport, the city commercial be done. It was a race between... It was a race between an Eclipse jet and an LFA car, supercar of Lexus. The car that raced against the jet is one of very few that has been made, and very expensive. And from what the airport manager told me, you know, what he witnessed and actually got to be a part of, 168 miles an hour. I, I'd like to thank the Stevenson Auto Group for choosing the Longmont Airport, and also like to definitely thank personally Tim Barth for his job on making sure that all the i's were cross, uh, i's were crossed and t's were dotted, as far as getting the permit from the FAA. I got to meet with Kent Stevenson, he's had, had nothing but stellar things to say about working with the, with Tim Barth at the airport, and other city staff. As my understanding, he also met with several other city employees regarding this commercial shoot. Brian Landauer was there as well, as well as a member, and I forget the gentleman's name, from Lexus, Na, the US Lexus. So I'm kind of curious of whether or not this is going to be just a local Colorado commercial, or it could be national. It's nice to have that exposure at the airport, and as the driver said, if he had an extra 1,000 feet, would definitely would have taken the, the, the plane, the jet a little bit further, and I told him we were working on it. So it's nice to have that, that exposure. Hopefully, we can do something like that again. Again, my thanks to Tim Barth and any other members of staff who are working on that project. Thanks.
Councilmember Finner.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Want to have a business of the week this week? It's kind of related to the one last week. Last week was the Plaza Hotel that's now affiliated with Best Western. This week, it would be the restaurant Harold's that's at the Plaza Hotel, I got to eat there last night, and it was quite tasty. The food is delicious, and so I recommend everyone go to Harold's.
Councilmember Samari.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. As an added benefit to that airport advertisement yesterday, two worthy organizations are going to be getting $10,000 each, because there was a bet as to which would win the car or the airplane. And the manufacturers of the airplane and the manufact, and Lexus, both decided to any up $10,000 each. One's going to our center, and the other one's going to the veterans.
Helping veterans.
Helping veterans.
Great.
So that, not only do we get the benefit of the ad, but two organizations are getting some really good help from that.
Councilmember Levison.
Yes, um, thank you, Mayor. Later this week, we've got a, another one of the multicultural plan focus groups to determine how we're going to move forward, so I invite council members to maybe find some time to do that. And, and also, I do appreciate the discussion around the CML Policy Committee, because it really does help me when we're in that meeting to be clear about our city position. So while it was a lengthy conversation, I do believe that it really does make sure that, that I follow exactly what our, our city's positions are. And, and then I also want to encourage, well, I guess the, the voting deadline is actually midnight tonight. I don't know if the clerk is out there still taking applications for voter registration, but if you're going to, want to go in the election, no? All done, huh? You could do it online by midnight, I guess. So if you, if you want to do it online, get, get it done. Go vote Colorado, exactly. And then I also want to remind people, I know the 19th is a very, very busy night, but the inclusive communities event is on the 19th as well. And I want to thank, Thursday night last week, there were multiple events happening. I was able to attend the Boulder Community Action Program Award Summary, and I want to congratulate Edwina Salazar, she got an award for being a leader in the nonprofit category, and just wanted to give her a shout out and say congratulations. And also, to congratulate the museum on a wonderful opening for the Day of the Dead exhibit. And we were able to welcome the, is it the Assistant Consul General? He, the Consul General was not there, the, the head of the consulate in Denver was not able to come, but his assistant came, right? So it was great to see all that, and it was very well attended.
Well, I would also like to, well, first off, thank all the council people that were at the airport yesterday representing the city, because I wasn't there, so it's good that I have a good Mayor Proton that shows up at events when I, I'm not there, so I appreciate that. I guess that's, I have one other thought, but it's skeeting me for right now. All right, city manager, any additional remarks?
No comments, Mayor, council.
City attorney?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, this meeting's adjourned.